Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the City Council for Monday, August 11th, 2014. If you will please rise and join Councilman Levitt in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please put your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Mayor Procham Sloan.
Here.
Councilman Levitt.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Councilman Shanks.
Now is the time, by motion of the City Council, to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or to rearrange the order of the agenda. It's at this time I'd like to kind of set out what we're going to do this evening as far as a presentation by Long Beach Animal Control and the Department of Navy. What we will do is begin tonight with a presentation made by the gas company, and then we will go into coyote awareness with a presentation by Ted Stevens, who is from Long Beach Animal Control. Then, after that, the Navy will follow, and then we will take questions from the council members as well as from the audience. At that time, then, they can respond and answer any questions, which I think will be helpful because they'll answer your specific questions. After that is over, we will then go into oral communications and address everything else from there and keep the agendas the same unless I have anything different from my colleagues. Okay, seeing none, then, we will take a motion for the approval of the agenda as just outlined.
So move.
Please vote. And that's 5-0 to keep the agenda the way it is. All right, at this time, then, we are going to move into a presentation from the Southern California Gas Company for their annual update, and I'd like to introduce Jennifer Gonzalez to you. Good evening.
Actually, I got married. I'm now Jennifer Vaughn.
But I'm sorry, say it again.
Jennifer Vaughn.
Jennifer Vaughn.
Yes. But thank you. I don't mind still being called Gonzalez. Today is August 11th, as you already mentioned, which actually also happens to be referred to as 811, which is National Call Before You Dig Day. And it's appropriate for me to be here today to remind everyone to call before they do any projects before digging, because I don't know if you watched the news a few weeks ago, but somebody didn't call before they dug over in Newport Beach and caused the gas to go out to the entire Belboa Peninsula. So 3,000 people were without gas for almost the entire weekend, all because somebody didn't call before they dug. So there's the little note for the day, but it's also just a good reminder of our commitment to safety from the gas company. We work very closely with the city, the fire department, and the police department, actually. This year is something new. So I want to talk a little bit about safety and then some partnership opportunities that we have. First of all, I mentioned the fire department. I know you're covered by Orange County Fire Authority, and we've already met with them this year. We meet with them annually to talk about how we respond to incidents and make sure that we're in partnership with how best to address any issues that may arise. And the rapport that we have with the department is incredible. They are aware of where our lines are and how to respond, and we reciprocate with the information on how they want us to respond to their fire, the way they respond as well. So that's one way that we're partnering in Seal Beach. The other one, as I mentioned, is the police department. Unfortunately, your chief can't attend, but we're having an event for the first time next month where we are inviting all of the police chiefs and our public information officers to meet with our corporate security and media relations so that we can share information about how to respond to security issues dealing with our pipelines. As you know, that's an issue now. And ever since San Bruno happened, which has been four years ago now, the attention on natural gas has been heightened. And I know you and Seal Beach do have our transmission lines, so you probably know that we've added onto our website a link where you can put in your address and find out if you're located near any gas lines. And if you're within an eighth of a mile of any of those lines, you would have received some communication from us annually. So if you have any questions about that, you can always look at our website, feel free to contact me, know that I'm your contact for anything gas company related. If I don't know the answer, I can find the people that will be able to get that information to you. One of the other things that I wanted to mention is that another meeting that we have annually is with your Public Works Department. We want to make sure that we coordinate our efforts. There are so many projects to infrastructure in the area. We want to make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and digging up a street that you've just paved. So we try to work hand in hand and coordinate those efforts and notify the residents when our work is coming. And I know you have experienced that firsthand. So hopefully, if you do have any questions or issues with our presence in any of the streets, please let me know, and I can help clarify any questions that you have with that. Another great coincidence of tonight is that I happened to meet up with the Naval Weapons Station and, is it Seal Beach Wildlife? Right, thank you. So another new event that we're having, actually, on Wednesday, is we're inviting all of our environmental partners to meet up with us so we can exchange information on different ways that we can partner on improving the environment. And as I mentioned to Esther, there's an opportunity for funding. So the gas company has a robust community relations department and money that comes along with that, and we're always looking for new ways to spread our corporate citizenship throughout the territory. So if there are other nonprofits in the area that you think we need to be aware of, please bring those to my attention. I would love to learn about them. And then finally, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that you're aware of, and with the help of Public Works, we're working on creating a link to our website from yours to advertise the many programs that we have for your residents. So there's several customer assistance programs. I'm sure many of you are aware of them, but just so I can remind you, there's always rebates. So if you're doing remodels or just replacement of any equipment that you have in your home, maybe it's a water heater, or a dryer, or dishwasher, any of those things could potentially have rebates associated with them. So we want to make sure that you get the money for that. And then there's also customer assistance programs related to funding your bills. If you have trouble in the winter months, I know it doesn't seem like we have much of a winter here, but there are on occasion times when you have to use your heater. And if your bill raises high enough to a level where it's not feasible for you to pay, there is a one-time gas assistance fund that we do have. In addition to that, there's several energy efficiency programs that we can help you with so that it's not just rebates, but teaching you how to best prepare your home so that you're getting the lowest possible bill but most efficient use of your gas. So with that, I can take any questions. I did provide my business card to the city clerk, as well as some of the programs that I mentioned, and hopefully that will also be linked on your website.
Okay. Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask Ted Stevens to come forward and to give us a presentation on the coyote awareness, and after that, then, we will have the Department of Navy and then take questions.
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for having me here again tonight. I appreciate it. Hopefully, what I'm going to do tonight is provide some more education. I believe that this is a very polarizing and difficult situation that a lot of cities in Southern California are dealing with, including Long Beach, including the city I live in, which is Garden Grove. I just live just past College Park East. I live in West Garden Grove. So we have coyotes in that area. And I know that Seal Beach has done a lot. I know compared to what they've done in Garden Grove, Garden Grove has sent me little to nothing as far as educating me about coyotes, and I know that Seal Beach has done a lot, including PSAs that we've developed, town hall meetings, signage, just, I think you guys have done a great job in educating the public, so I do commend you for that, more than my city has done for us. I know that. So, see if I can figure this out here. So I'm going to just briefly go through this. I brought a couple show-and-tell things, and then I'll be available for questions. So the policy of Long Beach Animal Care Services is we encourage a healthy coexistence with the public and natural wildlife, and that includes coyotes, raccoons, possums, stunts, everything. And that's consistent with the California Code of Regulations, state law, which governs wildlife. Long Beach Animal Care Services' policy, ACS, will respond to coyote calls if there's a sick or injured coyote, if the coyote is out during the day in areas around people, especially children, parks, schools, things like that, threatening or attack on a person, anything like that, we would definitely respond to. What we don't typically respond to is 10 or 11 at night, coyotes running down the street. That's a sighting. We'll record it, but it's not something we're generally going to respond to. Okay, so a couple things I want to cover tonight briefly. Why are coyotes in Seal Beach? Solving coyote conflicts, and tips for coexistence. So why are coyotes in Seal Beach? Probably because of the lovely beaches. Well, first of all, there's plenty of habitat. Obviously, we have the Navy base on one side. We have the reserve on this side, Gum Grove Park area back there. There's a lot of habitat there. And then, there's actually habitat within the city. Coyotes are actually very adaptable, and they have adapted to living in urban environments. Studies have shown, though, that they do spend the majority of their time in the wild areas and come into the urban environments generally for food, especially this year with the drought. Actually, talking to Fish and Wildlife last week, they've mentioned that their mountain lions and their bear calls have skyrocketed this year, and they think it's because of the drought. These wild animals are coming down, looking for water, food, things like that, and so they've become a little bit more visible. And we think, they think it has something to do with the drought. So there is plenty of food, mice and rats. So they do provide rodent control rabbits. There are a lot of rabbits in certain parts, small mammals, possums, raccoons. And they help to balance the ecosystem. They are limited competition. They are the top predator in this area. Other possible attractants are pet food and water that's left outside, unsecured garbage cans, messy bird feeders, fruit. They do eat fruit and vegetables. Believe it or not, they're scavengers. They're omnivores. They'll eat whatever they can find. Compost piles, unfortunately, available small pets. Again, they're opportunistic. They're not around looking for dogs and cats, but if they happen to come across one, unfortunately, they will do that. And then intentional feeding. We haven't come across that yet in Seal Beach, but it's not impossible that somebody is intentionally feeding coyotes. I would hope that wouldn't be the case. I know we're having a problem in Belmont Shore right now in Long Beach, and I've heard word that some people think there are people intentionally feeding the coyotes there. So we haven't figured out who that person is yet, but we hope to find out soon. So coyote sightings. Coyotes are generally diurnal. They're most active at dawn and dusk. Believe it or not, they're not necessarily nocturnal in their natural environment. That's something that they typically do in urban environments as an adaptation to try to avoid people. So it's not totally uncommon for them to be out during the day. It's just not common in urban environments, because with the people around, they generally avoid people. Coyotes living in close proximity to people can become habituated, and that's when you have an issue. When a coyote becomes habituated and loses its fear of people, that's when you can have an issue. And that's generally when we have conflicts. Coyote habituation. Coyotes usually become habituated when they learn that people and/or neighbors are a source of food. Pet food outside, like I said, fruit trees. And habituation is a learned behavior. That's not something they're born with. Generally, when they're born, they're afraid of people. That's where they're born. They have to be, they have to be trained to not be afraid of people. And the way they get trained that way is when people ignore them, people hide from them, people run away from them, and people don't, people don't give them a reason to be afraid. So if nobody hazes them or gives them a reason to be afraid, they learn they don't have to be afraid, and that's when they can become habituated. So like it says here, we reinforce this behavior by not reacting when we see a coyote. So preventing coyote conflicts. Education is paramount. And like I said, Seal Beach has been very proactive, so I do commend you for that. You guys have been working with social and traditional media, The Sun newspaper, your town hall meetings, public service announcements, signage. I mean, you guys have been very proactive and very great. So will coyotes attack pets? Normally, coyotes hunt small rodents, you know, rabbits, things like that. So it's not, you know, a big leap to think that they would mistake a cat or a small dog for their normal prey. So unfortunately, unattended pets, especially small dogs and cats, are at risk of coyote attack. Larger breed dogs are generally not an issue, except during mating season, which is like December to March, and that's when the alpha males will sometimes get really aggressive defending their territories, and they may, not very common, we don't get it often at all, but they could become an issue with another larger dog that they see as a threat to mating with their female. So proper pet care and safety is the most important thing. So protecting dogs. Always attend your pets when you're outdoors. Use short leashes when walking pets. Keep your pets inside, especially at night, and do not allow your coyote between, do not allow a coyote between you and your pet, and do not allow dogs to play with coyotes. So small dogs. You can see that one, that little cute little thing on the left bottom right there is my dog. We just adopted her from the shelter about two months ago. She's all of about this big. She was three pounds when we got her. She's a walking six pounds now. She's tiny. And all through potty training, two in the morning, four in the morning, when she needed to go outside, she was on a leash right next to me. I didn't let her go outside unattended. When I take her on walks, she's on a leash. I don't let her go in the backyard by herself. It's too dangerous. There's coyotes where I live. She's tiny. I mean, you know, I mean, look at that little face. So I can imagine something happening to her, and I do everything I can to protect her. So like I said, it's especially important to accompany them outdoors, especially at night. Large dogs, be extra vigilant, like I said, December through March, always use a leash and don't allow them to play with a coyote. And I know that's silly, but my aunt's dog, a couple years ago, tried to play with a coyote. She had a cocker spaniel, and it ran out and tried to play with the coyote, and the coyote ran off. Protecting cats. So the only way to ensure a cat is safe is to keep them indoors. I mean, that's really the only way. And never mind coyotes, I mean, coyotes attacking cats. We pick up several thousand dead cats being hit by car every year. So there's a lot of other hazards out there besides coyotes, if you're catting outdoors. The other thing you can do, you can put a cat, you can train them to go on a leash. And as you can see, these people here have actually built large enclosures because they want to let their cats go outside and enjoy the nature. So there are other options, but keeping your cat indoors is actually the best and safest way. So protecting pets at home. Remove thick brush, any places that a coyote could hide in your backyard. Get rid of those things. I know, I just took out a bunch of jasmine that was in the corner of my house because I was freaked out that a coyote's going to hide in there and attack my puppy, so I took all of it out. So everything in my backyard's open. Nothing's going to hide back there. Secure your garbage lids. If you have bird feeders, make sure you clean up under them because that attracts the rats and the other things that'll attract coyotes. Keep your pet food inside. Pick up fruits and vegetables off the ground. You can buy motion-activated lights and sprinklers that can spray and flash the coyote. And then, some examples here, you can see are some fence protection roller screens because the coyotes, they do is they'll jump up, grab the top of the fence, and then hop over. So these are some things you can do to keep the coyote from actually being able to jump over the fence. So do coyotes attack people? Coyote attacks on people are extremely rare. Generally, there's a dozen or so bites every year throughout the entire country, as opposed to 4.7 million dog bites. And I know, just as our agency, Long Beach Animal Care, this isn't just Seal Beach, but just our agency, we handle about 500 bites a year, dog bites. We actually had five people bit by squirrels last year, but we didn't have anybody bitten by coyotes. And squirrels can carry disease, so you know, that is, you know, something to take serious. So I just wanted to share that statistic. Safety tips for children. Never leave small children unattended outside, you know, one, two, three years old. I mean, I wouldn't do that anyway. My kid would get into something and get hurt if I left him unattended. Pick up small children. If there is a coyote nearby, you can pick the small child up. Teach children safety around strange dogs and animals. I mean, they're more likely to come across a strange aggressive dog than they are a coyote, but teach them what to do for both instances. Okay? First thing is you can teach them be smart. Stop and don't make any sudden moves. Make yourself, make yourself look big. Announce yourself by making noise. I would tell them scream for mommy and daddy, or just scream for somebody, scream for help. Nobody's not going to come running if they hear a small child yelling and screaming. Retreat by backing away slowly. Never try to run away, because at the national night out, when I was talking to the kids, I was telling them, you know, coyotes can run over 40 miles an hour. So unless you can run 50, don't try to run away from the coyote because it'll catch you. And then tell an adult, and that would go, you know, obviously towards making the noise, yelling, screaming, mommy, daddy, grandma, grandpa. Yell for help. Don't try to run away from the coyote. Let the adult, and if you're the adult, run to your child or grandchild. Don't tell him to run to you. First, solutions for coyote conflicts. If you see them on the bus, call us. We'll come get it off the bus. How to address problematic coyote behavior. So there's a couple of different things that are often brought up, you know, what can we do about the coyotes? So we have some different options. The first option is removal, and this is lethal removal. It's trapping them, killing them, shooting them. If you're trying to catch one specific coyote, that can be obviously difficult and expensive. I believe, I've heard different numbers, anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000 for one or two weeks of trapping with no guarantee of catching anything. Just, we'll set up traps. If we catch something, we catch it. If we don't, we don't. Transient coyotes will fill empty home ranges. So what happens is when you remove coyotes by killing them, new coyotes, every year, the transient coyotes that are looking for territories, if the attractants are still within the area, new coyotes will just go, oh, hey, look, there's nobody here, fresh territory, and they'll move into the territory. Also, coyote populations that have been trapped may reproduce more. Studies have shown that when you try to trap and kill coyotes, they have the ability to have larger litter sizes. The litter sizes have more females, and then the females breed at one and two years old when they typically wouldn't. So you'll have more coyotes having babies, more coyotes having more babies, and they're having more females. So they have the ability to adapt and increase their numbers. Lethal removal does not address the root cause of conflicts. It doesn't eliminate the attractants, and it doesn't teach people how to deal with coyotes. It doesn't teach them how to haze them, how to live around them. And also, it doesn't teach the coyotes anything. If you've killed the coyote, it can't go back and teach its young or its other pack mates or family members that people are scary, because they do do that. If you haze the coyotes enough, they go back and they teach their young and their other people, hey, people are scary. Stay away from them. Just like they teach their young how to hunt, they also teach their young what to be afraid of. And so that's what we want. And it just basically becomes an endless cycle of killing. You just have to keep trapping and trapping and trapping and trapping because new coyotes come in, you trap them, and it just keeps going on and on. So just real quick, I won't get into the study too much, but there was a seven-year study in Colorado. They had a control area and an area that they trapped and killed, up to 75% of the coyotes in that area every year. And within, when they stopped trapping, within eight months, the population went right back to where it was before they started trapping. And like I said, the mean litter size is doubled. Instead of having six to eight babies, they were having up to 12 to 14 in one litter. More females and more of them reproducing. So relocation. This is probably the one I hear the most comment that people don't understand is why can't we just trap them and take them someplace else? Well, there really is no place else to take them, and in California, it's actually illegal. It's actually illegal to relocate wildlife. And so that's not really an option. And even if we could do that, you're just moving the problem to another community. The Cook County project, they actually tried to relocate some coyotes. All the coyotes died trying to get back to the area where they were trapped from. So all the coyotes, even when they were removed, they tried to get back anyway. So to address coyote conflicts, we need to change coyote behavior, and we need to change our behavior. So changing our behavior is we need to eliminate attractants, make sure we're not feeding wildlife, remove the attractants from our yards, take precautions with our pets, teach our children, and educate our neighbors, so that they're all doing the same thing. Because if I remove all my attractants, but all my neighbors are leaving theirs out, then it's not effective. We need everyone to participate in this. Last thing I'm going to talk about is hazing, because this is the most important thing. It's a training method that employs immediate use of deterrents to move an animal out of an area or discourage an undesirable baby behavior or activity, which is basically the same thing as training your dog. And with my four-month-old puppy, I'm doing this all day long. I'm hazing my puppy all day long, trying to get her to do what I want her to do. So I'm training her. I'm not hazing her. I'm training her. But for a coyote, it's called hazing. So coyote hazing, using various techniques to re-instill the natural fear of humans back to habituated coyotes. And techniques include a lot of these, yelling, waving your arms, responding aggressively. That is really what coyotes understand. And I know that seems counterintuitive when you see a wild animal, is to act aggressive and go towards it, but that really is what they, that's what coyotes understand. They understand aggressiveness. They don't understand, you just walk away. They just learn, I don't need to be afraid. But they will respond by running away. That is their natural instinct is to run away. Banging pots and pans, squirt guns and hoses, throwing things, tennis balls, rocks, whatever you've got around, whistles, air horns. What we're doing is we're marking our territory in a way that they understand. It's, hey, this is, you're not allowed to be here. I don't want you here. Coyote hazing changes coyote behavior. It's a learned behavior that they pass on to their pups and to the other members of their family. They do actually teach it, the same way they teach them how to hunt. And what you never want to do is ignore them. If you ignore them, like I said, you're reinforcing. So a couple of things about hazing. The most important thing is making connection with the coyote for it to work. Okay? Hazing from a car or from your house, if you're behind a screen door and you're yelling, hey, coyote, get out of here. The coyote can't see you. It's not associating that with a person. It's just hearing random noises, a car, you know, horn going off. They don't understand what that is. Same thing with, I even, you know, Same thing with, I even, you know, I've had people say, can I go out and shoot them with a paintball, a paintball gun? If you're hiding behind a bush, shooting them with a paintball gun, and they don't know where it's coming from, you're not, you know, they may get irritated, but they don't really know that it's a person that's doing that to them. So, they don't associate it as, hey, people scare me, people are mean to me. So, they really need, you have to make a connection with the coyote. One of the things that I carry around, I haven't used this one, because I don't wanna accidentally get it in my face, but this is actually the mace pepper spray, I think I mentioned this about a year ago. I bought this at Ace Hardware, it was like $15, if you can carry it around. It shoots about 10 feet, but if I was walking my dog, and the coyote was trying to get my dog, I could use it on him. Like I said, Ace Hardware, they sell it Sports Authority, I think it's about $15. This one here, it's called Spray Shield, it's pet safe, it's like citronella-based, and it says it's good on attack dogs. I know some people have used it on raccoons. I carry this one around, because this one, if I were to accidentally get it in my eyes, it wouldn't bother me, but it'll bother the coyote. So, this one is like a little bit safer, I feel. Will it work on a coyote? I think so. I've been told that it will. It works on dogs, so, a coyote's a dog, so, I kinda make it, I feel safe carrying this around. The mace, like I said, the pepper spray's an option. I know this will work, but I just, I'm afraid if I accidentally get it in my own eyes, then I'm not gonna be able to see or do anything for 20 minutes, so, it's not gonna blind me, but I don't wanna get sprayed with this, you know? And if my little kid were to accidentally grab this and spray himself, he's not gonna hurt himself. So, this one, you can get it, I think, PetSmart, Amazon, Petco, it's citronella-based, called Spray Shield. That's the one I carry around when I walk my dog, just in case. So, these are just a couple of things you can do, these are, you know, easy things to get. Oh, last thing, the very bottom, must continue hazing until a coyote has completely left the area. It's not uncommon for a coyote to run about 10, 15, 20 feet away, and then turn around and look, and see if you're, what you're doing. If you just yell, and he runs 20 feet, and then you go in your house, he's gonna learn, okay, I just need to stay 20 feet away from you, and you'll leave me alone. So, you need to actually chase them all the way out of your block, at least out of your neighborhood, you know, down the street, around your block. They'll eventually get up and run, but it's important to really haze them out of your area, wherever you don't want them. Haze them out of that area. So, most important thing, there's, that's at the Sports Authority there, so $14.99, that's how much it costs. Best practices, a variety of methods and hazers is important, okay? I mean, yeah, my animal control officers could come out and haze the coyote, but eventually the coyote's just gonna learn, okay, I just need to be afraid of the animal control guy. The guy in the big white truck with the scary uniform, I'll be afraid of him, but I'm not gonna be afraid of anyone else. So, it's important that everybody's doing the hazing. Only use noise makers when you have a connection with the coyote. Again, that connection's important. And it can generally take at least up to two or three times of hazing the same coyote before they finally get it. And again, it's just like training your dog, they don't pick it up the first time, you have to teach them. Couple warnings on hazing. Never haze a sick or injured coyote, their behavior can be unpredictable. Don't haze a cornered coyote. If the coyote is cornered, doesn't have a way to get away, it will defend itself. So, make sure that, they wanna run away, so make sure they have a place to run away. And ensure that there's plenty of room for the coyote to escape. And then, young children probably shouldn't try to haze, they should get an adult to do it for them. Lastly, never, ever, ever, ever feed coyotes. It's a dangerous situation. A lot of the bad attacks and bites that have happened over the years, when they finally trace it back, they find out that someone was feeding this coyote. So, it became to not be afraid of people, it actually started associating people with food, and it becomes an issue. So, just in conclusion, we need to change our behavior, we need to change the coyote's behavior, and we need to all work together. Very special thank you to the Humane Society, who provided a lot of this information that I'm sharing with you tonight. This is our phone number to report coyote sightings or conflicts, or to request field service, that's our website. Go to our website and get a lot of information on wildlife and coyotes available there. And questions?
Any question from the council?
Yes. Ted, is it against the law to feed wildlife and coyotes? There is an actual law that says they cannot do this? Because I have someone over in Leesy World who has been seen on a daily basis throwing food scraps into a drainage channel where the coyotes go to feed now, obviously, because they know there's food there. Can we then approach them and say, if you don't stop, you're gonna be prosecuted? We can do that, all right. Do we need your help to do that, or?
You can, I mean, if you just wanna warn them, let them know that, hey, this is against the law, you can be arrested, you know, misdemeanor.
That doesn't work.
That doesn't work, you can call us, if you know who the person is or their address, we'll be more than happy to come, write them up, cite them, it's state law, but we can enforce it.
All right. Are you familiar with a koi wolf?
A koi wolf?
Yes.
That'd be half coyote, half wolf?
Yes. Are you familiar with those?
I'm not familiar with those.
All right. Someone has told me that that, some of our coyotes in Leesy World are in fact koi wolves. And I've looked up, as everybody does, on the internet, and there's a slight difference. Koi wolves are a bit bigger and more aggressive, but you know, I mean...
They would be bigger. I don't know if any wolf, I've never gotten a call for a wolf around here, so I don't know what would breed with the coyote to make, you'd have to have a wolf, I assume, to breed with the coyote to make the koi wolf. And I don't think we've ever had a call for a wolf, I'm thinking we would have, but, yeah. All right, thank you.
Ted, I have a couple of questions. One of them is right actually off of your koi wolf thing. I watched a fascinating program on Nat Geo the other night, and I really highly recommend it to everyone. It was called "The Urban Jungle." In fact, I looked to see if it was available for purchase, and it isn't yet, I'm sure it will be. And they said that the coyotes will also mate with dogs, and that those are very dangerous dogs as well. So, I think that's something else, that when you say to keep your larger dogs in, and especially around mating time, we don't want, we don't wanna have a bigger problem than what we've got, and I could see that could, that would be our next problem. So, I would really urge everyone to watch this urban jungle. Downtown Chicago has 2,000 coyotes. This isn't just our problem. Like you said, there are bears, there are mountain lions, other countries actually have elephants that have re-entered into the urban environment, so it's a fascinating thing to watch.
I'll look that up. It'd be easier to spot in the bushes, too.
They don't even need bushes, I don't think.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, then, what I'd like to do is, if you don't mind, I'd like to bring up Greg Smith, and have him talk to us from the Navy perspective, and then we'll take questions from the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please hold your pardon. Hi, good evening, there, good evening, council members. I don't have a formal presentation, I just wanted to give you kind of an update on the coyote situation at the Naval Weapons Station. As many of you know, we have a full-time environmental staff on the base, including a Navy biologist, as well as the Fish and Wildlife Service there, that helps manage the National Wildlife Refuge, and they have a full-time biologist on site as well. So, we think we do a pretty good job of keeping track of the wildlife on the installation. And we believe that, at the moment, we currently have somewhere around 10 to 12 coyotes on the base. That's for the entire 5,000 acres of the installation, both the north side and the south side, as well as the National Wildlife Refuge. That's probably a tad higher than normal, because we're just sort of entering, we're past the breeding season, coyote pups have been born, and they're kind of growing up right now, and being taught, you know, where the food is and all that sort of stuff. We had a problem a couple of years ago with coyotes that were starting to become habituated towards humans, and they were starting to, normally, they would just sort of stay out into kind of the back floor of the base, and not go into our administrative areas too much where most of the people are. But we started seeing a lot more coyotes around where the people were, and we initiated a program similar to what the representative from Animal Control just got done talking about, and it was very successful. Within a few months, the coyotes have basically abandoned all contact with people on the base, and you really kinda had to go to them in order to see them, instead of just seeing them, you know, as a part of your regular workday. More recently, within the last month, we had one adolescent coyote who was starting to kinda hang out in our admin area as well, and our Navy biologist took it upon himself as sort of a personal mission to start hazing that coyote. He only had to do that a couple of times, and we haven't seen that coyote in our admin area in the past few weeks. So, hazing, you know, the key here is, hazing is extremely successful. I will say, and the question I get all the time is, well, you've got all these coyotes from the base, to the biggest area of open space in the city, and, you know, are the coyotes coming out into the community, are these coyotes that are coming from Gum Grove Park, or where are they coming from? And the answer is, they're probably coming from everywhere. Our security folks do regular checks of our fence line, and on occasion, they do find an area where it appears that a coyote has burrowed under our fence. We don't see that as a coyote threat, so much as we see that as a potential security threat to the entire base, because obviously, if you've got a hole that's about half the size of a person, it's pretty easy to enlarge that hole so a person could fit through. And obviously, we don't wanna see that. So, whenever we see coyote burrows in the fence line, we call our Public Works Department, they come out, and they do a very good job of refilling the coyote hole, not only just with dirt, but with like big rocks and stuff, so the coyote can't just redig the hole out on his way back in or out. So, I think that's about all I had to say. Does anybody have any questions?
One more question, maybe Ted can answer it, if you can.
Sure.
In the slideshow, it says, do not haze an ill, a sick coyote, an injured coyote. What do you do?
Call us.
Really? We just back off and call you?
Call us, well, say you're injured, we'll respond to you right away. That's a priority.
Okay.
Okay, so then, what I'd like to do now, if it's all right with you, is I am gonna ask the public to come up and ask their questions, and then we'll take all the questions at once, and you guys can just kinda jot them down and prepare to answer them, and then we'll answer the questions, and then move on with the rest of the meeting. So, if you have any questions for our experts, would you come on up and, to the mic, and ask it, please? And then, that way, this whole presentation will be available on the computer at any time anyone needs to see it. So, come on forward. And comments are fine, too.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity. You know, I know the drought, but out there, they're growing constantly.
Sir, could you give us your name and speak into the mic? Otherwise, it won't get on there.
Nate Canada, so, reach, California, 121 11th Street. And I'm thinking, you know, they're constantly growing in the south out there, so I don't think I buy the drought, you know? I think that there must be coyotes, maybe they're living under houses or in subterranean areas throughout the city. I don't know, I don't know if they can even jump the fence. Can they, can, okay, they can jump the fence, then, okay? With the, with the barbed wire?
They probably can't jump that. They can jump six-foot fences without barbed wire, and I don't think they'd be able to jump a six-foot fence with barbed wire.
So, there's no way that they might be getting in around the jetty on the...
They may be able to get under the jetty between the rocks.
Okay, so that's probably, okay, so, I would say, we need, maybe, like, the gate that was installed, maybe do something there, because that's probably the only reason. People see them run across the beach, and I see them all the time run across Ocean, the alley and ocean, between, you know, Central and Ocean Avenue. And that was my, and then, I think, wait, that's my question, I think. I just, you know, I think that this is gonna, it's gonna get worse, and I don't know why, do people feel like these coyotes are too tame right now, so if we trap them all, is that gonna help, maybe? And because they're just too tame?
Okay, we'll address that after, after we have all the questions. We'll talk, no, that's all right, thank you very much. One thing I would like to ask Mr. Levitt, is you guys have just redone all of your fencing and so forth, how have you found it to work?
We have, we found that the earlier entrance points are gone, because we have, the fences are much higher, and we have spikes across this top to keep out everything that's undesirable, not just the coyotes. And we have the one end of the drainage channel that's coming from the base, has been blocked off as long as we don't have a heavy rain event. It's the other end, we're pretty sure they're coming in now, and the other end is the Garden Grove family. We know they're coming in that way, instead of coming from the back.
So, it hasn't solved the problem?
It hasn't, no, they've discovered that they can find another way to come in, and they do. These are not dumb animals.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Judy Di Epifanio at 221st Street. I'm on the corner of the intersection of the flashing red lights. I want to dispute the fence issue. There's a six-foot chain link fence where two wires go over, and in between the metal post is like a barbed wire. I happened to be able to witness a very, very healthy coyote go right up against the fence and do a straight up and over, and completely missed the barbed wire.
Those are rude to the comfort.
My name's Tom Griffith, I'm over at 208 11th Street. And a few different things, kind of ideas, and one other thing, Councilman Levitt, I think you're right about the hybrid type of coyote. I happen to work at a power plant just up the street off Sudavaker, and I have personally seen some rather large coyotes, almost the size of large German shepherds, I would say in the range of not a 25 or a 30, but closer to maybe a 45-pound dog, to the point that I was actually walking out to my turbine deck to get to my vehicle, and I had three of them around my truck, and I walked back into my control room and said, hey, guys, can take a look at this? And everybody was stunned, to the point now, when I walk around at night, because I work night shifts and day shifts, I walk around with a, it's a valve wrench about so big, just in case, because you never know if an animal has already trapped something, killed it, and you walk around, and now it's gonna defend its prey that it's already got, so there's a possible chance of attack. On other things, we're talking about fencing, having barbed wire, or the animals dig underneath. Why can't we go ahead and have a barbed wire, a single barbed wire, go in the length of the bottom of the fence, where an animal does try to dig underneath, it still has that obstacle of a barbed wire at the bottom? The other thing is, the hazing. I think Chief Joe's gonna get after me if I'm out there at 1:00 in the morning with a pan and a spoon, and I'm hazing a dog, banging, because there's gonna be some crazy guy out there trying to run off a coyote, and I'm gonna be waking up the public, because unfortunately, the coyotes, they're coming at night. Last night alone, around 12:00, I just switched shifts, and now I'm on day shifts and night shifts, so time is kinda weird. Coyotes at 12:00, 12:00 last night, howling and yapping. I went out to, outside to discover, not only was I out there, but I had two of my neighbors outside, and we're all looking at the green belts, trying to see what was going on. What brought me up here today was, unfortunately, back on 7/13, I had gone out that night, came in around 12, 12:30, and walked inside, changed clothes, grabbed my dog, and let him out, but unfortunately, my screen door was left open, and my lovable cat, that I had 14 years, was unfortunately mauled and found out about it the next day by my neighbor, who came and knocked at my door and said, hey, where's Murphy? I called, and instantly, he says, I have his collar. That's all I had left. Unfortunately, he took care of the remnants and washed those down the street. And on to the hazing of the animals. Since then, I've come home, I come home at night to walk... Since then, I've come home, I come home at night to walk my dog while I'm at work on my lunch hour. And I'm driving down Electric, and I see a coyote on the green belt. And I stop, and I get our big, and I honk, and all the damn thing did was turn around, look right at me. Got to the point where I felt like I was on the other side of the food chain. So I really don't think that's working. Uh, I'm not gonna take a squirt gun to, to a dogfight. Uh, you know, we're talking about paintballs, but we don't, we shouldn't paintballs around anything like that, or people getting crazy. That's just, just all around. But we do have to do something about it. I used to work in Houston, uh, in Houston, Texas, at the Astrodome. We had a excess of cats. And one of the things that we found out how to get rid of them is to actually trap them, spay them, and neuter them. What happens is, they end up dying on their own and not reproducing. And what happens is it keeps the others at bay because they want to keep their domain. So it's, I think it's a viable idea that we do trap and spay and neuter these guys so they won't reproduce. I don't like killing animals. I'm an activist on that side. I love my cat, but I'd rather have him unfortunately eaten by a coyote than to ride a car. So those are just kind of my ideas. Um, I appreciate what you guys are doing and doing for us. I'm sure all you guys have read, Facebook, this has been blown up about what's happening in Seal Beach, because we've lost at least six or seven cats on 11th Street just in the last couple of weeks alone because of these coyotes. Uh, so those are my thoughts and my ideas, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks for bringing ideas along with the other.
Hi, Gretchen Schacken, I live up on the hill for 24 years, neighbors of Gordon, so he knows what is going on on our street, too. Um, in those 24 years, the coyotes pretty much hung out in the backfield. Uh, now they're coming down to where everybody lives, and down into Old Town, and the Greenbelt especially. Um, they used to just be out at night. You could hear them hooing and hooting all night long. Now and then, a neighbor's cat would disappear, but it wasn't a big problem as it is now. I'm a big animal lover, so, I mean, the thought of killing the coyotes really is a turmoil for me. However, I feel like, you know, it's gotten to be where it's getting to be scary for people, as the man before me just told. I mean, I have strobe lights in the backyard, I have, um, lights that flick on at night, I have, I've invested in all kind of lighting. I have flashlights to be strobed, and the minute I get out of my car, I'm doing that all over the neighborhood, looking behind, you know, bushes I have underneath my car. Most of the time, if I go out and I'm not gonna get home till 11, I have friends drive me. I don't even drive myself anymore, because they just sit there with their car, and the lights going, being sure I get in safely. The other night, I got home on Friday night at 11:00, and by 11:30, there was a pack of coyotes hit my side gate really, really loudly, and were in my backyard. When I bought, when we bought our house on the hill, we backed up to the Hellman, well, the past Hellman property. So I backed up to the backfield. Um, when we bought it, we thought it'd be fabulous, because we all loved animals so much. But all the raccoons, possums, skunks, rabbits, um, ground squirrels, everything is gone. So I think one of the problems is the coyotes now are coming in looking for pets and anything else they can find, because there is no more wildlife out there. I haven't seen a possum or a raccoon in a really long time. Um, paid a lot of money to have that property where I look over the backfield, and it was really fun for all those years. Now, not so much fun. Um, they come in, the other night, there was a pack of four in my backyard, they come right up to my back, um, windows and gates. I have an inside cat that would never go out. I have a small pekinese from this, uh, shelter, and, um, he never goes out past 7:00 at night, or he never goes out until 8:00 the next morning. So it has to do, have pee pads all over the house for him. Um, the coyote report, the sightings that I've reported to the police or, or trying to get through to animal, animal control, I'm never able to get through. Like, if I call the police and say there's a coyote walking down the street in the middle of the day, um, they'll say, "Well, call animal control," but usually, it just goes to an answering machine. So that's not, you know, by the time they get it, it could be the next day or that kind of thing. So I'm having a problem, you know, if we're supposed to be reporting rogue coyotes. I also work at the Seal Beach Animal Center, and the other day, we had our dog walkers, who start walking the dogs at 7:00 AM in the morning, um, for the first walk. There was, um, uh, one of our walkers with two small dogs, she picked them up, and the coyote confronted her over by the Accurate Storage Area there, right below Accurate Storage. She did everything she was supposed to do. She yelled, she screamed, she had the dogs in her arms, she started picking up rocks, she was stomping her feet, she was screaming for help. Another coy, another walker came over and brought two more dogs, medium sized dogs. The coyote continued just to stand there and starting to circle back and forth around them. So now, they were really scared, they were continuing to screaming, clapping, and making all kinds of noise, waving their arms, until a third walker came over with a large shepherd. So at this point, we had five dogs and three adults doing all the hazing things, and finally, it walked off. But then, the shelter is over behind, you know, the other side of where I live, and so we know they're all in the backfield like that, that they're out during the daytime. They walk along the Hereon Point Road, they jump over the fence onto Seal Beach Boulevard behind the police station, we've seen them do it. Um, Gum Grove was closed for quite a long time. We have the coyotes that have the pups that also came in my backyard with the moms at night. And, um, so no one could really use Gum Grove, we still don't walk the dogs down there. So now, we've invested in air horns, so everybody that walks dogs has to take an air horn with them, and this is mostly during the day. We don't walk the dogs in the evening, or we don't walk them right at dusk, and we don't walk them at, um, dawn anymore, because we have daylight savings. So this is during the daytime when we're encountering all these coyotes. Um, I know when I was a teacher in Rossmore, they hired a predator team, and it did seem to help them somewhat. Um, it just seems like, you know, and when we're in, when we're in Seal Beach now, we can't have any animals really that go out at night. We have a neighbor-to-neighbor website, which we hear about all the different reports. The other night, at 1:00 in the morning, one of the neighbors reported on Crestview that he heard all this noise of coyotes hooting, looked out his window and saw a, a dog, big dog, being chased by a pack of six coyotes. And, you know, he went out to look, and then he saw this happening. It was like terrifying. Um, I just feel like, you know, I'm not really totally sold on the hazing, because we've tried almost everything. We've tried the air horns, I have a soda can with pennies, we have people with whistles, we have banging of things. I mean, I can't do my air horn at 1:00 AM, my neighbors would kill me. But, um, I kind of feel like, you know, we're like kind of armed when we go out for a walk. And even when I take my dog out at 8:00, I'm not sure. Someone saw a coyote the other day at 9:00 in the morning on Catalina, just up the street from me. So I think it's, you know, it's getting to be a problem for people also. Um, I don't really understand the coyote, um, thing about the females having more, um, pups to do, because to me, it would be like, why do we have, wouldn't all animals do that? I mean, we'd have no endangered animals. I don't, you know, like other animals, wouldn't they just reproduce more? So it doesn't totally make sense to me that just coyotes would be able to do that when we have a lot of endangered national animals. Um, it would seem like they would never be extinct if they just continue to populate. So I'm not really, um, totally understanding that concept. I just sort of feel like, you know, Seal Beach is such a great town, and I'm, I'm afraid that we're gonna eventually get to a point where, you know, it has to wait until like a child gets there or something. And then, we're finally gonna do something. I don't know what to do, but I mean, I'm scared, I feel like a prisoner in my own home sometimes, especially at night or early morning. And, um, I kind of feel like, you know, I pay a lot of taxes to live here, I love the city. Um, when the coyotes pay taxes, maybe they'd be more welcome. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Laura Ellsworth, I live on, uh, Coastline, um, on the hill, and I do not back up to Gum Grove. Um, I live in a block that has cement walls, and I built up a fence, and I have lattice on the top as the city requests me to do. And I now have a doggy door, and I have a 25 pound Boston Terrier. And I don't want to let her out at night, and that's my backyard. And I'm scared, because I'm hearing all of these packs that are coming, I'm reading the, the same thing on the next, um, the next door neighbor. And, you know, we see the videos from Burbank where these coyotes in packs are coming and, um, going after big dogs, I'm not talking about little dogs. Um, and I'm very concerned about it, and I absolutely feel like I'm a prisoner, absolutely. Um, I don't take my dog out at night, and I'm locking my doggy door, and I don't think that I should have to do that in my own house.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, Sean Brady. Um, I just wanted to ask the gentleman if, uh, the, the report that he put together, obviously attributed to Humane Society, and I recognize that, I was actually gonna point that out, so it's, I appreciate you pointing that out, and, uh, but my question is, did you consider any other sources in developing this presentation other than the Humane Society? Um, for example, the work of, uh, Dr. Robert Timm, Dr. Rex Baker, um, this gentleman Claude Oleyar, that's O-L-E-Y-A-R. Uh, as a matter of fact, that's probably the, the most recent and comprehensive report that should be consulted, that refutes most every of the, of the assertions that this gentleman put forward. And I, I don't mean to, uh, attack him, uh, I, I think that what he put together is being pushed by certain groups like the Humane Society as the, uh, common wisdom of how to handle this, but, um, they're not an unbiased source. And I believe that, um, uh, these gentlemen, Dr. Timm, Dr. Baker, uh, Dr., Mr. Oleyar, maybe less so than, than these other gentlemen, are, are, uh, sources that should be considered with peer reviewed studies that basically say after a while, hazing doesn't work. I can understand why hazing might work in a, in a environment like the naval base where you have, uh, a dedicated, uh, concentrated area with dedicated military people who understand, you know, the same rigors of, let's haze them, they'll figure it out. But that's just not reality in, in society at, at large. I mean, it's hard enough to get a room full of people for anything, a city council meeting, how are you gonna teach a whole city to haze? Uh, and you're gonna ask, you know, an 85 year old lady whose baby, you know, whose little dog is getting attacked, or a mother whose child is, you know, getting followed to rush a coyote? Okay? Uh, so, there's more information out there, I, I just wanted to point that out, these, I, 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 I want to bring these sources. There's also a website called huntfortruth.org that explains a lot of this stuff and sort of the, um, some of the, the, the reasons that these policies are being pushed. Uh, if the city, if the council is so inclined, I can leave, uh, Mr. Oleyar's, uh, report with the, with the director.
Yes, please. You want to summarize quickly what you think a solution might be?
Well, you know, it, it is, it is, there's no easy solution, let's be frank. But what, um, Dr. Baker says is that unfortunately, and I, I take no, no particular joy in saying this, that lethal, um, um, methods are the most effective in, in treating this, and that's trapping. And, um, I, I would take issues with saying a dead coyote doesn't teach anything, it most certainly teaches coyotes are not dumb creatures, as, uh, Councilman Levitt pointed out, they are not dumb creatures at all, they are very smart, very impressive animals. And, um, and it's not so much about getting their numbers down, I don't think. Uh, so if the females, even if that is true, that they, they overpopulate, populate more, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily a problem of the amount of the coyotes, it's their behavior. Uh, that, that report points out very clearly that, um, it's worked in Glendale after a three year old girl was, uh, killed by a coyote in 1981. In the, in the, two months after that, they went out and killed about 80 coyotes in the surrounding area, didn't have any problems thereafter with pets or anything for years. Um, coyotes learn that behavior, they, they learn to fear humans, and that's the, the program you, I, I, I watch Urban Jungle as well, it's, it's not just coyotes, although they are particularly impressive predators, because they're the only ones who tend to, um, you know, use this situation to their advantage even more so than any other creatures.
I don't know, the baboons were pretty impressive.
Yeah, I know, no, they are, they are, yeah, yeah, that is true. But mountain lions in, in suburban Portland right now are, are a problem, uh, you know, the, the, so it's, it's animals not fearing men, and so, uh, hazing can be a component of that, I think, but, uh, it can't be exclusive. And unfortunately, um, the gentleman said, you know, trapping them and, um, um, making them sterile, that's, that's potentially an option, I, I would imagine would also put the fear of, hey, I just got trapped, uh, I'm staying away from that area and that coyote, he would teach that, uh, to other coyotes. So I, I don't necessarily think that, you know, I, I don't want them to be killed, I'm just saying that that, that it has been shown by the experts to be the most effective way. And, uh, and to, to make them sterile, I mean, that would probably be fairly costly, as is trapping them, unfortunately, too, but, so doesn't matter.
All right, thank you.
I'm Dorothy Owens, I live over at, uh, 315 11th Street, and unfortunately, I don't know too many neighbors who haven't lost a pet over the last couple of years, especially recently. We have a couple of neighbors where they're off of 11th and Landing, where the preschool is, that have taken the initiative to try to clean the little park by the preschool in the morning before the children arrive of the animals, so that the kids that arrive for preschool don't see the, the remains, and they try to get up in the morning and clean the yard, the, the park area. Um, and they, they've been doing that for quite some time, and there, there are days that they go out there and clean up two or three cats in, in one morning. Um, there's been times that, that a week doesn't go by that there isn't an animal remains out there. And I know a lot of it is on the Greenbelt, but a lot of it is, is over off of the Zoder Field area also. And, um, but what I wanted to say, I didn't bring the statistics aside, but on hazing, I have been reading, and there's several websites that refer to the different levels of, of aggression in the coyotes, and different stages. And the hazing seems to be more, they, indications were that at level one and level two aggression, hazing seems to be very effective. When you get into level three, four, level five, where they're interacting with people and they've already lost that fear of people, which seems to be the interactions that we've had recently in Seal Beach. You know, years, a few years ago, that worked, but this last year, couple of years, the aggression has, has escalated considerably. And at that level, hazing is not as effective. And some of the communities, they, they've done, they have done paintball, um, where there is pain inflicted, you're not hiding behind a bush, you're standing out there, you're still yelling, you're still screaming, you're still doing the hazing, but you have to inflict some sort of pain. You know, pellet guns, air guns, something, firecrackers, the air horns, which I've, one of my neighbors is a volunteer at the shelter, she said, she's had encounters up there where they're not even faced by the air horns now. Sometimes they are, other times, they just kind of turn into wood. And they, they don't run. The incident that the one woman had talked about, my neighbor was, was the woman with the German Shepherd that came running. And that particular coyote, the woman that had the two small animals, the initial, um, encounter, she was holding the animals, and the coyote was within two feet of her when, as it ran by trying to grab one of the dogs. And she was, my neighbor was up the street and came running and, and yelling, and the coyote would retreat a few feet and then turn around and come back. And it wasn't until a man came out, and they were all throwing rocks, and the man actually hit the coyote several time, a couple of times with the rock, before the coyote retreated. So I, the, hazing doesn't seem, from what she has seen with her encounters recently, the hazing isn't effective, at least up by the animal shelter. And fortunately, I, on my, I don't take my dog out after about 7:00 at night, I don't take her down to the Greenbelt anymore. I've got a, about a 27 pound dog, and she's, she's not that small, but I'm not gonna take her out for walks, which is a shame, we should be able to walk the streets with our pets. And I won't take her out early in the morning, because we've seen packs of four, I've, I've heard reports of six coyotes a couple of times. And they're not going to be afraid of a person, they're not gonna be afraid of large dogs, that you get that pack mentality, and they can go after any size animal at that point. So.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
If we have any, um, new information that we want to share, um, before we go back to our animal people? Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Dave Pincheck, uh, 1741 Crestview, and coyote situation is, uh, very close to me and my family. Last, uh, I'm sorry, October 2012, we lost both of our dogs. Uh, coyotes came into our backyard. We back up to Gum Grove Park, from the Gum Grove side, our wall's 13 feet high, and when I came home, my dogs were being attacked, the coyote- when I came home, my dogs were being attacked, but the coyotes went over the fence and had no problem jumping, um, over my side, which is six and a half feet, to thirteen feet on the other side, so, the fences are not much of a deterrent. Um, last Saturday, um, week ago last Saturday, I was loading stuff in the back of my truck, and my neighbor down the street, um, was unable to cross the street because the coyote was approaching him, and he had his two little kids with him. He was stomping his feet, clapping his hands, saying shoo, um, but he couldn't leave his kids, but the coyote would not back off, so, I grabbed some rocks and, uh, took off after it, threw rocks, chased it around, uh, to Catalina, it stopped as soon as it got far enough away from me, I took off at it again, uh, I'm pretty quick, but I can't keep up with a coyote. Uh, about ten minutes later, somebody videotaped it, took pictures, and it made it on, uh, Facebook and our, uh, local newspaper. Um, last Monday, a week ago today, my, uh, daughter went out to take out the trash, and there was a coyote in the street, um, and a neighbor down the street yelled at her and told her to get inside, there was a coyote, but she shook the bag and kinda scared, scared it away. Um, I'd like to reinforce the fact that the presentation here, although it's very informative, was put together by the Humane Society, and I think the Humane Society's objection, objective is to prevent us from killing animals, um, and, uh, it said that the coyotes are the top predator in the area, uh, I think we're the top predator in the area. I don't want to coexist with coyotes, they're a hazardous problem. I think the coyote situation is, is going to be something we're gonna be dealing with for a lifetime here, and the analogy I have is washing my car, um, I wash my car, and, uh, I gotta wash it again next week, and a week after that, I gotta wash again, 'cause it keeps getting dirty, so, the study in Colorado that states that, uh, they kill the coyotes and they keep reproducing, or they come back into the area, and you just keep killing coyotes, and you keep killing like coyotes. My question to the council is, can, if you guys aren't gonna do something about this, maybe you guys can be entrepreneurs and, uh, sell coyote hunting licenses. I will pay to kill coyotes, I've got at least a dozen guys up on the hill, they're more than happy to bait, trap coyotes in our yards and take them out, if that's legal, and you'll let us do that, you guys can generate revenue from it, and, uh, we'll take care of the problem if you don't take care of the problem. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Dayton.
Hello.
Hello, council. My name is Marcella McSorley, I live at one thirty-four Dolphin Avenue, and as you may recall, last October, my chihuahua Tula was killed by a coyote. That coyote jumped into my garden area, jumping an eight-foot wind fence, and it was absolutely devastating. I'm here tonight to introduce you to Noah McSorley, she's my forty-five ounce, eight-month little chihuahua, and I simply wanna state that I don't ever wanna go through that again, and I don't think any of you do as well, and I'm here to do whatever I can do to help find a solution that's right for Seal Beach. Thank you for your time.
I'm back, I'm Judy Diopofanio, two twenty-first Street. I didn't intend on sharing this, this is something that y'all, get the, Animal Control, whatever, doesn't really wanna hear. In nineteen fifty-one, nineteen fifty-two, and nineteen fifty-three, with my grandparents, I was on a horse ranch. You know how big horses are?
Judy, we need to hurry, okay?
Okay, we need, we haven't even started the meeting yet. Okay, so I just wanted to share that there were packs of coyotes that were attacking the horses, we had to go after them, and we had to send them out. Later in Pomona, by a, by a dairy farm, we had chickens also there, uh, along with horses also. So, what I wanted to say is, we had to send them out in Pomona in fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. What we noticed is, we got a year to two years of peace out of that, and it didn't hurt the coyote, you know, generating coyotes, 'cause they always generated, no matter what. So, I did live where I did go out with the adults to send them out, but it's all we could do to keep the other animals alive, so I'm just speaking from experience as a small girl, and that's that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sharman Snells, Oakham. Um, your comment about the, the breed is really interesting, 'cause, uh, I, I'm going to, I've lived half my life in Seal Beach and the rest of it in Idaho, and, um, the coyote, they're much smaller, really, about half the size. The first coyote I saw here in two thousand and seven on the beach, I thought was a German Shepherd, and the guy, the guy whose lab it was chasing told me it wasn't, it was a coyote, so, um, but I did wanna say that you might wanna look into the areas that have given bounties. I mean, some states, such as Idaho, have a bounty on coyotes to get these type of guys to go out and kill them, because they are protecting the deer herds in Idaho. It hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with people or even agriculture, it's how they protect the deer herds, so, um, I can't believe that every time states have paid a bounty, that those coyotes have reproduced at double and triple the amount like we're being told by the one-sided report, so I think that you just might wanna look into contacting some states that have used the bounty on coyotes and ask them if they saw an increase in population afterwards. It could be a simple solution, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask now, um, if Ted Stevens will come back and, uh, with, yes?
Hey, would you mind if I went first, just 'cause I, I think I got the easy questions.
Okay, good, go ahead, Greg, because the bottom line on this is, we're going to hold a town hall meeting, and, uh, we're going to, uh, try to do it with joint communities, and see what answers have been found in the communities around us, so, go ahead.
Yes, uh, thanks, Mayor, I'll be, I'll be very quick in answer to the question about the, about the fences and coyotes jumping over the fences or finding ways around them. You know, as I said earlier, our, our big concern, you know, in terms of protection of the base, isn't coyotes, it's people, and any place coyotes can get through, people can get through without too much additional effort, um, so we would really appreciate it if, uh, if anybody in the community does see a coyote burrowing under a fence, getting over a fence, anything like that, um, if you could please give me a call and let me know, and then I can get our folks on our public works department to either fill the hole or find some other thing to do with the fence to, uh, prevent coyotes from doing that.
What number should they call you at?
Wish you'd call me at area code five six two, six two six, seven two one five, that's my direct line on the base.
Okay, give it one more time.
That's five six two, six two six, seven two one five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, welcome back, uh, I think I took, I think I took some, uh, some good notes here, hopefully I'll be able to try to respond to everything, um, took a lot of notes here, I gotta get a second pen. Um, uh, so I just kinda go through order here, just to respond to some of these, um, you know, and that, this presentation I gave was kind of a shortened version of what I would normally do for, I mean, normally it's like an hour and a half is what I would do, and I didn't really get into how fast they are, how, how high they can jump, but they can jump relatively easily in eight-foot fence, um, so I didn't get into that, so they can definitely jump six to eight-foot fence, no problem, um, and like, like I said earlier, they can run forty-three miles an hour, they're the third fastest land mammal in North America, so they are extremely fast, they're very agile, and can jump. So, uh, someone mentioned they might be living under houses in people's backyards, it is definitely possible, um, when they did this study in Chicago, they did, when they were tracking and collaring all the coyotes there, they did find some of them were actually living in people's backyards, uh, some of, some of the larger backyards that were overgrown, they did find coyotes living in people's backyards, so, that wouldn't be totally unheard of, but, I mean, there are a lot of natural areas around here, so I don't know that that would be necessary, but it could be possible. Um, so, some people mentioned, you know, they're seeing coyotes at midnight, things like that, and that's kinda what we want, really, is we want the coyotes to kinda be out at midnight, and two in the morning, three in the morning, that's, that's kinda what we want, we don't want them out during the middle of the day, you know, ten in the morning, eight in the morning, when we're, people are out and about, that's kinda, that's kinda the deal we wanna make with coyotes, hey, it's okay for you to come out tonight, we don't want you out during the day, we don't want you around people, um, so, you know, obviously seeing them at that time, um, like I said, that would be something we typically wouldn't respond to unless the coyote was acting aggressive towards a person, um, just a coyote out at midnight roaming around wouldn't be something we respond to. And I just wanna touch upon something, um, I just want everyone to know, I don't have an ulterior motive or anything, I, my job, I feel my job, my role here is to just provide information and education, um, as far as what the issues are, I, I'm, you know, I'm in the fortunate position, I don't have to make the decision that you guys have to make, and I don't envy that decision, I didn't envy it when the city council in the city that I live had to make this decision a year ago, um, or any city council that has to deal with this, it's, it's not an easy decision to make, what to do, um, so, you know, my, my job was not to be one-sided, or try to be one-sided, I'm just trying to provide information and try to educate people, you know, on all the issues, so, there wasn't any, I don't have anything to gain by you guys killing or not killing coyotes, so, um, that's, it's just, I feel it's my job to give you as much information as I can to help you make an informed decision on how you wanna, um, handle your city, so, I just want everyone to know that, I, I don't have, I don't have an ulterior motive that, oh, you shouldn't kill coyotes, that's, that's not my goal or my role, that's, that's not why I'm here. Um, so, uh, okay, so a lot of things brought up, uh, coyotes spaying and neutering, um, I've actually had this conversation with some people, uh, I even talked to the, uh, professor at Long Beach State, and since nobody's done it yet, nobody really knows what will happen if you do that, and again, yeah, it would be expensive, I'm surprised nobody's done a study on this yet, that might be a cool thing if we could get someone to sponsor a study in some, call up some university somewhere to do a study on spaying and neutering coyotes, we don't know what that'll do to their pheromones, and, you know, the way the coyote family units live, they have an alpha male and an alpha female. The alpha female is the only female that breeds in the family unit, so, alpha male, alpha female, and then there's one and two-year-old, you know, younger pups are, uh, from previous litters, and then as, you know, as they get older, they kinda like kick them out, and they go set up their new family units, but the alpha female's the only one that reproduces. The other one and two-year-old females don't, so if you go to hire, if you, the studies that I've read, and not just one, I've read about three or four, at least three or four studies, if you start, um, killing, if you kill the alpha female, the two or three other females in the family unit will now breed, because the alpha female's gone, so, that's where I think someone would, you know, brought up, they were like, how does, how do more pups get born, that's, that's how it gets born, that's, I have a chart for it, I didn't bring it, I wish I would've brought it, but there's kind of a chart that shows how that works, but, so that's one of the issues, if, if you happen to kill the alpha female, the other females breed.
So you don't know what happens if we actually, um, uh, spay the, uh, the female?
Yeah, we don't know what would happen, we don't know if that would happen, or if you were to, uh, neuter the alpha male, um, we don't know if his pheromones would change, and maybe another male would come and take over his territory or kill him, we, we don't really know, so, I mean, that would be really neat, I'd love to see that study.
How many coyotes do you think we have here?
Um, well, I mean, obviously you have some on the base here, and then I feel like you probably have another family unit that lives in Gumbrove Park, um, just based on, you know, reports that, you know, they say that coyotes are limited, so I would guess that there's probably some living over there, um...
How much territory does a family require?
Uh, depends on the number of available resources, the more resources there are, typically the smaller their territories would be, they're totally, they'll make their territories as big as they need to get the resources that their family unit needs. Um, I believe there's probably some more, I know there's some living, um, probably in the other base there, the joint base on the other side in Los Alamos, I know there's some living in there, because Los Alamos is dealing with coyote issues, and as far, as far as, that's where I feel the coyotes for College Park East, um, are probably coming from there, and also the ones that affect West Garden Grove, where I live, is probably the same place, they're coming from that area.
So you're saying only one family in Garden, in Gumbrove?
Um, well, you wouldn't, normally, two, two families don't occupy the same territory, so, normally you'd have this one family unit has their territory, and they kinda defend that territory, so, I mean, that family unit can be...
And in Old Town, you'd see packs of a family unit coming into Old Town too, then?
It could be, you could have, you could possibly have some overlap there, I don't know, if they came across each other, they would definitely fight, um, 'cause they generally defend their terr- when you see them in packs of three, four, five, six, that is territory defense mode, that's not hunting mode, that's them going out defending their territory. Um, when they're in hunting mode, they're generally by themselves, and the reason is because what they eat is so small, they're eating a cat, or a small dog, or a rat, or a rabbit, that's not something you wanna share with five or six other large coyotes, so, when you see them in packs like that, they're generally in, uh, territory defense mode, um, which is, that is when they will be a little more aggressive towards a large German Shepherd or a large-type dog. Um, but, I mean, that's just, again, I, I couldn't tell you for sure, but like I said, I think you've got one up there, I think you've got one in Gumbrove, you've got some over, so you're kinda surrounded by them, probably on three different fronts, um, you know, they come up and down, um, the riverbed area, and they go into East Long Beach, Belmont Heights, and those areas, so, we have those issues on Long Beach too.
How many is a family? Is there any family, how, how many coyotes?
A family unit would be almost, probably much like what you'd have on the base there, like a ten to twelve, that's kind of a stable unit, but then as the, some of the pups get older, the, like, two and three-year-olds, especially the males, will get kinda kicked out, and they'll go out, and that's when you'll get a transient coyote, and those are the ones that, if they'll go looking for an open space, once they find a new territory with no coyotes, they'll set up shop and say, this is my territory now, so, yes.
You said that they actually, they'll, they'll travel in packs unless they're defending their own territory, but, but there's been sightings of, uh, single coyotes, packs of coyotes, split cities, so, including, you think that there's a few different families in the areas, possibly one at the base, one in Gumbrove?
Right.
They, some go from the Elgara Park area?
It's possible, but they wouldn't wanna go through another coyote's territory, they would, they, they, they will defend their territory from other coyotes, so...
Unless the food supply is down enough to provide.
Right, yeah, then, yeah, then they might try to take over another one's territory, but generally, there's enough food in people's, you know, in the neighborhoods, people leaving up food laying around.
Okay, we need to, we need to wrap it up.
This doesn't seem like we have enough, uh, sort of, of time, you know, we're sitting in a, all this time, I mean, you can, come here tonight, eleven, just park on that I elected, and you're gonna see them come out.
And running around?
So, there again, you know, I, I would personally say there's at least a bunch of overthrew coyotes around, and that's a lot of coyotes that need to be fed, and I go back to them as well, because it's just trying to feed themselves, but if you read, if we did bring in these, uh, population of rabbits, in these, in these vacant areas, would it, maybe that might, another quick one, I don't wanna go feed them, but, you know, they're doing something.
Okay, could I, could I break in here for just a minute, okay, because this is not our town hall meeting that we wanna have, and we do need to have a council, we need to have a council meeting yet, so, Mr. Stevens, if you could wrap up your comments, and then, uh, we're gonna take a break.
Okay, so, yeah, um...
And then you guys can go talk to them.
We could talk about coming into neighborhoods, I think, you know, the coyotes have learned that there's food available in the neighborhoods, unfortunately, I think that, you know, that, yeah, the drought is maybe one part of it, but I think the other part of it is, the drought may have had them come in, and they come in and say, hey, look, there's food in Bill's backyard, uh, Bob's backyard, he leaves dog food out every night, this guy has, you know, fruits and vegetables, so they start learning, hey, there's food here, so they will, they will come in here more. Um, and like, and, and, you know, I never, you know, I never said that hazing was exclusive, uh, you know, someone talked about, you know, killing could just be one part of it, um, hazing wouldn't be exclusive either, you also have to do your best to remove the attractants, um, otherwise, yeah, if, if everything's that's still attracting them is still there, um, they are gonna still wanna, wanna come in and, uh, come in, so it does have to be a whole approach, that's, if you're removing attractants, hazing, if a coyote does cross the line and become overly aggressive, then sometimes you do have to trap and kill that, that one coyote if you can catch it. Um, as far as hazing, someone mentioned, uh, about hazing, uh, level five, they've lost their fear, um, you know, that, sometimes the first time you haze a coyote, you have to be more aggressive, I mean, the one gentleman chased the coyote, you know, around the block and chased it all the way, and then it sounds like the next time, his daughter did it by shaking the trash bag, so, I mean, as, there's been times where, a lot of times, the first time you haze a coyote, it's in your, it's in your driveway, the first time you haze it, you yell, you scream, you go outside, you yell, you scream, you might have to run right up to that coyote and chase him down the street to get him to leave. Comes back a day or two later, coyote's in your driveway, you open the door, soon as you start going at him, then he's gonna run away, and then the third time, he might, soon as you open your door, the coyote runs away. And then the third time, he might, soon as you open your door, the coyote runs away. So, sometimes it, it does, that first time you haze, sometimes has to be more aggressive than the second and third times. And, you know, he can probably talk about, it sounds like they did some hazing over there. But sometimes you have to be more aggressive. You have to throw rocks at them and hit them with the rock. Sometimes yelling, yelling and screaming isn't enough. Sometimes you do have to take that extra step. And it's gonna be hard to haze them, if you're holding two little tiny dogs in your hand, it's gonna be really hard to haze a coyote at that point, because you're trying to protect these dogs, you know, that, that can be really tough. We had a lot about where we saw them, hit with a rock, ran away, more aggressive hazing. As far as hiring a trapper, it is legal to hire a trapper to kill, to hire on your private property. If a citizen wanted to, just like when it comes to raccoons, possums, rats, on your private property, you can, you can hire a registered licensed trapper, you know, to trap whatever you want, as long as it's, you know, within the state law. So, it's not illegal to trap coyotes, it just has to be done on your private property, you can't go out and do it in public space. So, you know, someone asked about that and brought it up, so I just thought I'd just, you know, kind of educate on what the laws are, it is not illegal to do that. The gentleman mentioned some of these others, these other sources, Robert Tim O'Leary. I'm gonna look these up and Google these tomorrow and check them out and see what they have to offer. So, I'm, you know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not about one way or the other, I'm just about providing information and educating. So, I'm happy to help any way that I can, town hall meeting, information, whatever I can do, so.
Okay. Well, Ted, thank you very much. And we're gonna go ahead and take a recess right now, and I hope this has been helpful to all of you. Thank you all for coming out, I really appreciate it. The, the input on what to do is really helpful. So, let's keep working on it, and we will have a town hall later this year. Thank you. Mayor Deaton?
All right, welcome back. I think we'll stop the council meeting now, what do you think? Anyway, thank you all very much for coming out on the coyotes. I know it is very disconcerting to have the coyotes be as aggressive as they are, but I know working together, we're going to solve the problem. And it is a regional problem, it is not a Seal Beach problem, and so we are going to work on putting together a regional town hall meeting and see if we can't work with all of the cities around us to solve the problem. So, thank you for your input. Moving on now, we are going to go to oral communications. So, I ask you to keep it really short, really clean, and is there anyone that would like to come up and talk to us about something else tonight? Yes, sir? Give your name to the record, please.
Thank you, my name is Jack Duty, and thank you for your time.
You can move the, you can move the mic.
Okay, I'll adjust it a little bit, thanks. My name is Jack Duty, I'm here to talk about, well, I initially came in for the coyote problem, and I heard a lot of the same concerns I had. I know we're moving on, so I won't get too detailed with it, but we had moved here about nine months ago, ten months ago, from the Eldorado Park area. The cat lasted about six months, and he was eaten by a coyote off of the greenbelt. He had a little buddy that he hung around with in the backyard, and his little friend lasted about another two weeks and was hit by a car on my street. I do live off of 10th Street, there are two churches and a swim school, and it is a avenue for massive amount of traffic coming through, and I know it's probably nothing new for anybody to hear this, but...
Well, let me just tell you that because of that, because I have a very close friend that lives on your street, I did ask for a traffic study to be done, and so if after the meeting you want to talk to our Public Works Director, he can tell you what happened on that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilor Robert Goldberg. I'd like to speak to the water conservation issue, but what I'm wondering is whether I could perhaps speak after the staff report, because I do have a number of questions, and I'm hoping that the staff report will answer some of the questions.
No, I think that'd be a really good idea, Robert, because I'm sure there are others that are going to have questions that want to talk about the water.
I have some neighbors here also, if they could reserve their comments till after the presentation.
That's what I'm saying, I think for everyone, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach, um, I called my husband and said, "He's walking the dog, be careful of the coyotes." And especially be careful-
You didn't know about those before?
Well, there's a light out up here on Sixten Ocean that's been out, and I heard that you got the lights on for somebody, gee. So, there's a light out on Sixten Ocean, and he's been worried about that for a couple months. And, so the other thing is, for the Seal Beach taxpayers that are listening, I have requested an audit of a water bill, especially the trash, and Mayor Deaton said that it has been ordered from an outside audit company. And, so now, tonight, I am requesting an audit of the Orange County Grand Jury, 2013, of cities in Orange County that are in trouble with the pensions. I am requesting an audit of the pensions, because this book does not look good. You've seen it, you have to respond to them by September, I think. So, that's two audits I'd like to see. And, and in the meantime, some of the questions before here, in my, in 2013, you did take the annual parking fees for the lights on Main Street. Now, at one of the planning commission meetings I went to about two weeks, three weeks ago, because I had one, one of the city planning commissioners says that it's extortion to ask for money for annual parking fees when you're not using them at all for parking. So, here it is, it's right here, you did take it. And you shouldn't be taking it when you're supposed to be finding parking or building a parking lot. We have that parking lot right up there, we can make a two-story parking structure. They have one in downtown Laguna Beach, you can't even tell it's a parking structure. So, some questions. Does the city still have a lobbyist at Washington DC? We used to have a lobbyist. Do we still pay somebody to be on our side at Washington DC? And, when the lawsuit was settled with Ruby's, when was it done, and what did the taxpayers have to pay to get that lawsuit settled? And I'm still waiting for attorney flowers about reducing yourself from voting on a non-competitive trash company in the neighborhood, and a gated community that has, have a different trash pickup company. Somebody shouldn't be voting to tax other people when they have a, that, well, it's not even a tax, it's that you won't let an outside company come in and bid, you won't let them come in and bid. So, and the other thing that's coming up, that you want us to vote on this reducing the utility taxes from 11% to 10%, it's gonna open up-
What?
Don't vote for it, it's gonna open up, because the federal government's getting ready to tax us on the internet, and that'll give an opportunity for the city to tax us. Also, I already paid a franchise fee to a city for my cable bill, seven dollars on a month. So, now, you're wanting to go for more money, and you're not gonna lose $300,000, that's only no more than you're losing at the police station, or the tennis court, or over there at the gut truck. You haven't solved those problems yet. So, we have a lot more coming up. I will be asking for another audit next time, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, Joyce, if you'd like some answers for your questions, I think the best thing to do is to go into City Hall and ask those questions of the staff. So, moving on, I would like to know about a city attorney report. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I've got some report this evening.
Okay, City Manager?
No items tonight, thank you.
Okay, Council Comments, tonight I'll start with Councilman Miller. Any Council comments? Okay, and Councilman Sloan?
No comments.
Councilman Levitt?
Very briefly, we're worried about the coyotes, and there's another threat out there that we need to be worried about even more so, and it's summertime, it's been a really unusual summer, we've got West Nile virus, there are nine human cases in Orange County. It's not going to go away without the help of anyone here making sure the mosquitoes are not allowed to breed anywhere near us. You've gotta do your part to prevent breeding of mosquitoes, you've gotta do your part to protect yourselves with the right clothing and the right spray. West Nile virus, for the very few people who get it neurologically, is the most devastating disease you've ever seen. Do everything you can to make sure that you don't come in contact with mosquitoes, but if you do, just, maybe 5% of the mosquito bites will transmit the disease, but you don't want to be part of that 5%. Do everything you can, make sure there's no breeding areas anywhere near your homes.
Thank you. Councilman Shanks? Councilman Sloan?
I would like to commend the lifeguards for some recent actions they've taken recently. They, they saved the life of a man, and it was very serious, and I just want to know that overall, the lifeguards do a good job, sometimes they don't get the credit for everything that they need, but anyway, I just want to commend you and your staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Sloan.
And I would like to commend our police chief and his team for the National Night Out. Thank you, Chief, it was a wonderful night out, and thank you for partnering with Los Al. I thought it made for a very informative evening, and I found something that was really important to me, and I wanted to share it with the audience here tonight. If you're like me, the older you get, the more medication you're taking, and some of it expires, and some of it gets changed, and you don't know what to do with it. I've known that twice a year, the police department with the explorers has a drug take-back time, but I'm sitting around with bags of medication in between time. So, this was picked up at the National Night Out, I've got the flyers over here on the desk for anyone that's interested, and it's a way that you can take your expired or unwanted medications and throw them in the trash, which I thought was not even a possibility to do. One, pour unwanted expired medications out of their original containers into a zip bag. Two, pour hot water over 110 degrees Fahrenheit, about as hot as a cup of coffee, into the Ziploc bag. Three, insert kitty litter into the zip bag, seal the zip bag, place it in the trash can, and this is put out by the Orange County Healthcare Agency, and the flyers are on the desk if you're interested. So, thank you, it was a very informative evening.
Thank you, Mayor Deaton.
Okay, with that now, we are going to move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Please vote. Okay, that's 5-0 to accept the consent calendar, it is approved. We have no public hearing, no unfinished business, and now we go on to the water rates, to the water conservation measures, sorry, I was... Adopt Resolution Number 6498 implementing Seal Beach Municipal Code 9.35.150, Phase 1, with the exception of subsection G. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Public Works Director, Sean Comby, will address this item for you tonight. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council-
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Council. Item E on the agenda is related to water conservation, and I'll be making a presentation tonight related to that topic. Just a little bit of history to start. Hopefully, everybody knows that currently, we are in one of the worst drought periods in recorded history, and on January 17th of this year, the governor declared a state of emergency, a state of drought emergency across the whole state. One of the components of that is that the governor requested a 20% reduction in water consumption across the state. Part of the reason why we're here tonight, on July 15th of this year, the State Regional Water Quality Control Board issued Resolution 2014-0083, and this is an order from the governor with a variety of water restrictions that all agencies are required to comply with. So tonight, we'll be making a presentation that details those items within that order, and we're going to talk about our own municipal code and some of the things in it that we're recommending to go forward to comply with yours. So, the first order of business, though, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce Joe Byrd. He is with the Municipal Water District of Orange County. Come on, Joe. Joe is the Water Efficiency Manager for MODOC, Municipal Water District, and he's going to make, present a few slides that just talk about the condition of our drought within the state. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Deaton, members of the council. Just going to be touching on our rainfall and reservoir levels, just to kind of hit home for you, the fact that we are in the worst recorded drought in our history. This slide shows you our local rainfall, and you can see that we're very much below what would be considered normal for the Southern California area. And next slide, this is a picture of the Northern Sierra Eight Station Index. This is where we go and monitor the snowpack and the rainfall throughout the Sierras. We rely on the Sierras' snowpack as a reservoir in itself, so it's not necessarily just the water that's in the reservoirs, but it's the snowpack in the Sierras that has a big impact on our water supply. You can see that we ended the year, or we started August, I should say, at 30 inches of rainfall, which is 60% of normal. You might think that's not too bad, 60% of normal, but the real concern is that there's no snowpack. And we rely on that snowpack to melt slowly and fill our reservoirs, so that we can draw out of those reservoirs. In the bottom graphic there, you can see that we had a very, very dry beginning of the water year, and then February and March came around, and we made up a little bit, but we're still very, very much behind where we would be normally. Next slide. So what that has translated to is that we have San Luis Reservoir and Lake Orville are the two primary water storage reservoirs on our state water project. You can see San Luis Reservoir is at 21% and Lake Orville is at 35%. So that kind of summarizes where we're at with our state water project. And now I want to look at the Colorado River. And you can see Lake Mead there on the left and Lake Powell on the right. On the Colorado, we had a slightly above-normal wet year, and that has helped, but these two reservoirs are the biggest reservoirs in the country. And right now, we're at less than half-capacity for Lake Mead and right about half-capacity for Lake Powell. So those rings around those lakes have only been getting worse, and if we don't have a wet winter this year, those are going to draw down even more. And I know the governor will be taking further action if we have a dry winter. So this is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of imposed regulations on water use in the state.
Thank you, Joe. I'd like to say that Joe works for the Municipal Water District of Orange County. We're very lucky to collaboratively work with all the other agencies in Orange County, and the code that we adopted in 2009 was done collaboratively with all the other agencies in Orange County. So I'll briefly talk on the state order that came down as was presented on July 15th of 2014, and we actually received the order on the 17th. And I know there's a lot of text up there, so I'm just going to briefly go through it. But the state did issue some items that were general in nature, and those first two bullets are some of those. And the city is doing and will do more to comply with those two items, but they did offer some specific direction. And that third through the end of this slide includes some of those specific direction items. The third one includes outdoor landscaping. The city is to prohibit all outdoor, application of portable water to outdoor landscaping in a manner that causes runoff. So, in short terms, you cannot have runoff coming off of your lawn onto the street. A second item there, washing of vehicles is only allowed with a hose that has a positive shut-off nozzle that's already been in our code, and we'll go through that. So that's not part of the Phase 1 that we're recommending tonight. The third one, driveways and sidewalks are washing down or prohibited. Fourth, the use of portable water in a fountain is only allowed with a recirculating system. And the most important one actually is the bottom, which is in bold, which is that the state is mandating that we trigger our water shortage contingency plan that imposes mandatory restrictions. And so our municipal code is that contingency plan. So, the contingency plan that I discussed was adopted by the city in June 2009, and essentially, it has three components within it, and we'll get into the three components. But those are mandatory measures that were, have been in place since 2009, a phased emergency measure approach, which we have three measures, the first being what we're recommending tonight, which is the least restrictive, the second, should the governor or the state mandate we go to further restrictions, are more harsh than the first, and the third being very excessive in dire conditions, should we ever need to go there. The third component of that municipal code includes enforcement provisions for the city to ensure that the municipal code is compliant. I will say that, and we'll get into that further into this presentation, but I will say that between 2009 and currently, the city has not actively, or I should say proactively, enforced the mandatory measures. We've relied on complaints from our residents, and that's no longer going to be good enough. One of the requirements of the measure from the state is that we submit a monthly enforcement report that details all the activities within enforcement, and the state's going to review that, and they're requiring that those items are proactively enforced continuously. So this slide shows the mandatory items that were adopted. The items that are within red are items that are required from the order that was taken in July of this year. Leak repair, within our code, it mandates that all irrigation leaks are repaired within seven days. No runoff, that was already a component of our code from sprinklers and irrigation. We actually have limits on watering hours within our code. The current restrictions are no watering between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and we currently do have limits on water irrigation. Currently, our code says no more than 15 minutes per station on your yard. Recirculating of water for water fountains is a requirement of our current code, and that is something we're, of course, recommending to continue. The items on the right, really the bottom one, washing of vehicles with a spray nozzle, that's something that's been required, and the Phase 1 approach will go further in that area tonight. So Phase 1, items that are in our code that we're recommending going forward today. The items in red, again, are items that are being specifically called out by the state on the June 17th order. What they'd like to see are designated irrigation days or times that exterior water use is limited in the city. Those include exterior irrigation, washing of your vehicles, motorboats, and equipment, and filling with swimming pools. So what we're recommending with Phase 1 tonight is a three-day-per-week restriction to when those activities can happen. So even-numbered addresses will be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and outnumbered addresses will be Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Other items within the Phase 1 measures, agriculture users will be limited to all non-essential use, or the shelter curtail, sorry, water for golf courses, schools, parks, and fields, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and cannot wash down hard surfaces, which include sidewalks or driveways. So implementation. What we're recommending tonight is to begin a 90-day educational campaign that will begin carrying out of the code. So, the first component of that, some of the items are listed within the staff report, and what we'd recommend are press releases, ads on our SBTV3 television program, bus bench and shelter advertising, reaching out in our city recreational guide, water billing inserts, and attendance at public events. Some of the other things we'd like to start doing is bringing on and doing educational visits. So essentially, having somebody, a water conservation inspector, look for violations within the city, and go to those areas and pay educational visits to explain to people what the rules are and why they have to follow them. And one of the things we're going to outline in the presentation tonight is there are a variety of rebate programs that are being offered regionally. The city participates with all the other agencies and pays into to provide programs for our residents. So we're hoping that participation in these programs might provide solutions for people to come into compliance with our code. So prime example for that, if you have an irrigation sprinkler head that's spraying out in the street, well, maybe you can participate in a nozzle replacement program that puts a new nozzle on your lawn that no longer sprays into the sidewalk. So that might be one way we can do it. One of the things I'd like to do tonight is introduce John Hunter and Associates. John, will you come up? So John Hunter and Associates is the firm that provides the city's NPDES program, which has been successful for-
It's been around 10 years now?
It's been a decade now.
It's coming up upon 10 years, and the city's had a very successful run with multiple audits, and actually, we've been in compliance in every audit. So we've been very, very successful with the program. We've been a leader, actually, in Orange County. And so, under their current contract, what we'd like to do is bring on an inspector for 20 hours a week to help us implement the program and get started. And actually, the inspector's here in the office, in the audience as well, Glenn Kahar, he can introduce himself as well, too. So you want to say hi real quick?
Yes, I'll say hi, and I will be very, very brief. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Hunter. As Sean has said, we have been working with the city now for over a decade. This is kind of an exciting endeavor. It's something that, as you saw earlier, is extraordinarily important, given the dire situation with our reservoirs. We've been working with the city on public outreach for stormwater. We think this is going to be an excellent merging of the two programs. We can piggyback on this program, essentially educate people on how to prevent stormwater pollution, at the same time, prevent excessive use of water. We're going to stress that this is going to be a public education program. We're going to try not to come down with a heavy hand of enforcement at all. We found that voluntary cooperation is far, far superior. We're ready to start, and we look forward to doing this. So with this, I'll invite Glenn to come up to the council. I believe this is probably Glenn's first time before a city council, so I've asked him to just say a very brief statement.
Glenn?
Hello, City Council. My name's Glenn Kahar, and I look forward to the opportunity of working with the residents of the city of Seal Beach to help us get through this drought. Thank you.
All right, and he was brief. And I will also mention Jillian Brickie, who is our, will be the project manager on this. So with that, I will, because it's been a long night already, I will stop and say if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
I have a question. Is this just for the exterior or the interior as well? I just noticed everything seemed to pertain to the exterior.
Why don't we hold questions until the end, and then we'll take questions and answer after the presentation's finished?
Okay, um, okay.
You want to take questions now?
No, what I would like to do is I'd like to just make, explain what we're doing. And what we're doing right now is you're asking for questions from the council regarding your program. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I'd like to defer those questions until we get through the whole presentation, and then if you would just make yourself available, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, because I'm not quite sure where all of this fits in what we're doing.
Sure. We're almost done. It's probably less than five more minutes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So just a quick slide to talk about city actions on some of our facilities. So immediately right now, we are in the process of auditing the irrigation system for all of the parks and medians and franchises that we have, and we're lowering our irrigation to two nights per week. So we're going to comply with the system as well. Glenn Kahar is going to be the inspector, but he is also going to go to all city facilities. He's going to look at our stuff as well as residents' facilities. We're looking at installing smart irrigation timers as part of the energy efficiency contract that was just approved by council, and we're going to modify some of our turf practices to move away from some of the items that cause high water intense, cause more watering, so such as fertilizing and overseeding. We're looking at potential use of recycled water, and we're really pushing, as I mentioned, energy, or water efficiency rebate programs. So I want to invite Joe up again. We've got four or five slides just to quickly talk about some of the rebate programs, and then we're going to close up the, close up the presentation. So.
Thank you, Sean. Smart, we've got a variety of different incentive programs and educational programs available to consumers throughout Orange County, and especially here in Seal Beach. These programs have been in place for years, and they will be in place for many years to come. A smart irrigation timer is a timer that automatically adjusts the irrigation schedule. It doesn't require the homeowner to go out and adjust it on a regular basis. We've found that these timers do save water, and they do reduce runoff. Rotating nozzles. Most sprinkler nozzles put out about 1.6 inches per hour. That's way more water than clay soils can absorb, so much of that water becomes runoff. These nozzles put out about 0.4 to 0.6 inches per hour, so it really matches the soil's infiltration rate to the precipitation rate of the sprinklers. So we've got $4 per nozzle rebates there. Turf removal rebates. Turf requires over five feet of water per year, and when we get only a foot of rainfall a year, you obviously have to make up that other four feet with groundwater and imported water. So we've already removed over 1.6 million square feet of turf throughout Orange County. This program is extremely popular right now. We're offering $2 per square foot of turf grass removed.
And if I might add in, this has been very popular with our residents. There's been quite an influx of people taking advantage of this program.
We even offer rain barrel rebates, and we thought we were going to play a trick on Mother Nature, but she called her bluff. We still don't have rain. And then next, all kinds of rebates for indoor devices, toilets, clothes washers. All of these rebates extend to both residential customers as well as commercial industrial customers. So we've really covered all the opportunities out there.
Thank you, Joe. So just to touch on enforcement within the code, well, first off, we're going to start a 90-day educational campaign starting tomorrow morning if this item's approved tonight, and we're really going to push participation in some of those rebate programs, what we just discussed. Within the code, the first offense, defined in there as a written warning from the Director of Public Works, the second offense is a 15% surcharge on the water bill, and the third offense can be installation of water-stricken device. And so our goal ultimately is to have none of the situations rise to that second or third offense, but just hopefully, we go through education and we can, we can get compliance that way. So with that, I'll just conclude and say that the Phase 1 measures within the order, the order is set for 270 days, and so we're recommending going forward through that period, after which time we would trim down the program to meet the needs at the time. It's my hope that we will be able to trim it way, way back to where it's, almost to where it currently is now. And so with that, I'll conclude, and myself and Jill Byrd and John Hunter are available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions?
I have a few, a couple of comments. I don't know if you want to comment-
I don't know if you want to comment.
Sure, of course.
First of all, I think we need a notice period. I mean, if people are out there not following the rules, the rules aren't even out there yet, so it's kinda like we need, I would think at least a couple of weeks' notice of some sort. The second thing I had on my list is 6:00 AM to, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM with that's the watering time. And we currently have 9 to 5. If we went to like 8 o'clock, I don't think we'd be losing much to evaporation, would we? I mean, if you have a timer on your system, fine. I don't have a timer on my system. I am the system.
Can I, can I piggyback on what you're saying?
Go ahead.
Um, Joe, what do they do in Long Beach? Before 9:00 AM and after 4:00 PM, three days a week.
I agree with you, Gary, because especially here at the beach, we don't even get, the fog doesn't even burn off till noon. So we're not going to get that evaporation. So I would be in favor of changing hours on that.
Okay. And the other one was the car, washing your car. I would like to see you washing your car anytime because you're not washing your car every day. And so I don't, and the time restriction, I'm not gonna be out there in the winter washing my car at 6 o'clock at night. And so the time restriction, I don't, I just, you don't wash your car every day. So I don't know that we need a time or a day restriction myself. The other thing with enforcement, you talk about enforcement, if people, I think you're gonna catch by enforcing during the day are people who are watering during the day. And to catch the people that have runoff, you're gonna have to be out there in the middle of the night, so. So the enforcement's gonna have to be more unique than just saying you're enforcing. That's my only comments for now.
Okay, I, I've got a couple of, the hours were the main thing that I was concerned about and my understanding, and I, and maybe I have it wrong, Sean, I know that we've discussed this ad nauseam and I'm still not getting it all. So washing cars, as long as you have the positive restrictive, you can do it anytime, isn't that right?
That is a mandatory measure that's in our current code. That's the current, what we currently have and will permanently have within Seal Beach. The phase one measures go further than that. The phase one measures will take the washing of the cars and restrict it to 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM on those designated irrigation days.
Okay, what happens on Sunday? Is it a free fall?
Nothing. No, that's, you're not allowed.
Okay, so nothing on Sunday, no watering on Sunday?
Correct.
But you need to realize that 6 to 6 is a staff, not, that's not from the state.
No, I understand. I'd like us to change those hours. And I'd also like to say that most people I think would be off work and be able to wash their cars on Sunday rather than during the week. So I think maybe we have some latitude to make some of these changes, is that correct?
We do. And what's being brought forward to you tonight is implementation of the phase one measures that were written in 2009 in the code that went in. So I think that up to a certain point, the council can, can make some changes to the, what's enforced within that and we can go forward and carry that out.
Okay, so what I'd like to propose, and it sounds like Councilman Noah also, is that we just kind of update the code a little bit to reflect our community and what we think we'd like to see. But I'd like to hear from the people and their suggestions first. Do we have any other council questions or comments? Mike, you wanna go?
Yeah, a couple of them. The $2 a foot rebate to remove turf, is that going to apply to leisure world? With the private gated community?
It does apply to private property.
Okay, and how are the arrangements made? I'll go out there and tear up my grass tomorrow night. How do we do this?
So I could just, we'll briefly talk about the program. There's an application process that goes through the MODOC and the city works in conjunction with MODOC. And the city does pre-inspections and post-inspections, but the whole application process works through, they have a program manager over there that handles it all.
All right. Not just for me, how does a person initiate the process to get this done? W what?
W U E.
W?
I think, I think yes.
A more direct shout is ocwatersmart.com.
Okay, that's even better.
OC. Okay, and that'll allow us, instruct us on how we can then apply for, for the turf rebate?
Everything's online. It's in, all instructions are in the app.
And that's ocwatersmart.com. And that's where you find all the rebates.
All right, very good. Uh, second question. Does the city or our auditor have the authority to go into a home and check for water leaks not being repaired?
Not on interior, no.
Not yet?
No.
Will you anticipate that happening as the drought continues and the governor becomes more desperate to produce some results?
I don't know that we're ever gonna have the ability to go into somebody's home without permission.
All right, last question. I noticed in reading through the report that golf course greens are exempt. As a non-duffer, why are they exempt?
Yeah, I can't, I can't give you a reason other than to say that the code was developed in conjunction with other water agencies. And it's, it's my guess that maybe the golf course association's lobbying for that. I can't explain why golf course greens are exempt.
Sean, I can add a little bit. The, the level of the ordinance that you're proposing right now does exempt golf courses. However, in more aggressive levels, they do become mandatory reductions in water use. The idea of being at this low level, 20% voluntary, is that golf courses are a business, basically. And if you harm a business, you harm their ability to generate revenue and stay open. So we're trying to be business friendly from that perspective.
Okay, okay. Last, and promise, last question. The reclaimed water that's coming from Fountain Valley through the, you have sanitation district and you have the department next door where the water is being reclaimed, recycled, and then being pumped back in. How would we be able to get some of that reclaimed water here to be able to handle our landscaping needs?
So I can address that. We've investigated potential use of reclaimed water from two sources. One from the source you're talking about and the other from the water replacement district. Both at this time, that, both need separate water systems. They cannot be integrated with our current water system.
Right.
And they financially have not been effective use of our money. We would need to build systems to connect back to the nearest closest connection point to what you're talking about.
Probably not a practical approach any, anytime soon.
It hasn't been practical yet.
All right, okay, thank you.
Hey, Councilman Sloan? Hey, Councilman Schenks? All right, then let me go ahead and open it up to the public and we'll see what they have to say and then we'll come back and discuss it some more.
Then we'll come back to the council.
Yes. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? I wanna be very clear that these are state mandated things. They are not something our staff has come up with.
Well, let me address that point. Most of it's not state mandated. Most of it is generated from, I'm not gonna say our staff, but we worked on this five years ago, coming up with a four-phase program. First phase was implement now, which we did in 2009, and then these three phases we thought about in the future. I don't know if any of the staff here was, was there 2009. I was there. I made some comments. I can tell you that was a long meeting and we weren't looking at phase one and phase two and phase three. We weren't really thinking that much about it because we were really focusing on the things that were gonna happen tomorrow. Just like tonight, we have to focus on what's gonna happen tomorrow to our neighbors and our constituents. And I've tried researching this on, at the State Water Board website and they have a fact sheet. I have a copy of the actual regulations that were put out and they have also FAQs. And the things that we have to do that were, I mean, the good news is that we're already doing a lot of this and I think staff kind of mentioned that. You know, regarding the runoff from, from watering, we're already doing that. The hose shut-off, we're doing that. The fountain recycle, that's, that's three out of the four things that are new statewide that we're already doing. The one thing that is new that we have to start tomorrow is we can't be washing down driveways or sidewalks anymore. That is new and that is part of our phase one that we have to implement. But when we actually look at the regulations, and you know, your professionals here can correct me, there's nothing in here about hours of operation. And so we do have hours of operation now. The 9:00 AM between 5:00 PM is prohibited. You don't need to change that. I mean, we anticipated with phase one it would change, et cetera, but you don't need to do that. You could keep, you could keep that the same. And there're gonna be enough changes, enough education that you have to do. I wouldn't mess with the hours. I would just keep, keep the hours.
Actually, I'd like to make them a little more liberal.
Well, that's, that's fine. Okay, but you don't need to, there's nothing in the regulations that I saw that said you had to tighten down, okay? Regarding car washing, I don't see that car washing mentioned anywhere in the regulations except for the shut-off, the hose with the shut-off valve. And so I would take that car washing reference out of phase one. Just take, just take that out. People are not gonna wash their cars three days a week, four days a week. They're only gonna wash their car maybe one day a week. And so you're not really accomplishing anything by saying if you live in an odd, odd house, you can only wash your car on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Saturdays. And if you're even house, you can only wash your car on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And yeah, you're gonna have to hire a consultant at $100 an hour to figure out how to enforce these regulations if you make them ridiculous. And that's, that's, and it's not the fault of staff. I mean, I was here four years ago and hey, this guy bought me two. That's fine. We weren't looking at, we weren't looking at phase one, but we're looking at it tonight. So I would just take out the whole, just X out that section of the, of the ordinance which is section C. You can just cross that out regarding, regarding the car washing. Leave the hours the same, make them longer if you want. And then regarding enforcement, and the staff report makes reference to a, a report, a monthly report that has to be submitted regarding inspection enforcement activities. I couldn't find any reference to that. There is a new monthly report that we have to make, but it's very limited. It's basically has to say how many gallons of water your agency produced this month versus the same month last year per person. And we have, we have water staff, we have water managers now who are counting the gallons every month. And so I couldn't find any reference to codes or anything that talked about this $10,000 penalty enforcement and all that. And the FAQs, in fact, under enforcement, one of the questions are, are local agencies required to enforce the new prohibitions using the infraction authority authorized by the regulation? In other words, code, code authority? And the answer is no. When the infraction authority provides an additional tool to local entities to use or not. And so you don't have to have infraction enforcement. I mean, obviously that's a good thing, but I can't see that that's required by the state code or that we have to report it as such. And that relates to our hiring or expanding this existing contract for 20 hours a week. But the financial report doesn't, doesn't tell us how much that's gonna cost. These guys don't work cheap. I imagine they make at least $100 an hour, if not more. So we're talking about starting tomorrow, starting this week, $2,000 a week to, to run this program. I just, I just think that's really excessive. I think educate, the educational program, we can work with the Lions to educate people, the Girl Scouts, the Terran Way Scouts, and enforcement, we can talk about enforcement later. But I wouldn't start this, I wouldn't expand this contract, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ricky, you wanna talk now, ask your question?
No, all my.
Come on to the male. Oh, you don't have one? Okay. If you don't have one, then you don't.
Maybe I might.
Okay.
Thank you, Ellie and Councilman. Actually, I guess I got a little excited because I didn't see anything there that said about what we're already doing about our laundry and using water in the interior of our homes. And now my, I've been working very hard to try and not do laundry after 2 and before 6. So these, these are the things that, and I, I commend you, Ellie, for changing those hours. I can't see me doing, what was it, I'm at odd, so 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. What am I gonna do out there at those hours? Not me, uh-uh. And I don't think most of us will. So I'm glad that you're all thinking above the natural. Just, just take it easy on us and forget that third one.
The third?
The 15%.
Oh, you mean the enforcement? Okay, anyone else?
Jeannie Dennison, Old Town. I just wanna second everything that Robert Goldberg said and the whole thing about the hours because did anybody also think about the time change and what it's gonna be like when the time changes in the fall? I mean, that's ludicrous. All the people that live in Leisure World that go out and one, either wash their cars or pay for a detail person to come in and take their cars, that person is now out of business. How are they gonna operate with those hours? So I really appreciate you doing this and I appreciate Robert bringing attention to all of us about what was happening. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public testimony and come back to the council. First of all though, I would like the staff to explain to us again about what is state mandated.
So part of the presentation, some of these red items that we filled in were specifically state mandated, mandated items. And the good news is, Mr. Webber was correct, many of the items we are actually doing. Within our code, one of the items that we talked about was, the state code specifically says that to promote water conservation, each urban water supplier shall implement all requirements and actions of the stage of its water shortage contingency plan that imposes mandatory restrictions on outdoor waters and ornamental landscapes of turf with portable water.
Okay, so what you're saying is the state has mandated that we put our own phase one into place so we can now look at our own phase one and make adjustments to it?
That's correct. But I would say that if we get beyond a few minor changes to our phase one, there comes a point where I think it would be more appropriate to revise the municipal code rather than just make administrative changes because we will no longer be enforcing the phase one restrictions within our code.
I thought if we do the phase one, that that would become a municipal code change.
I wanna clarify, because a lot of people have been referring to this as an ordinance. What if before it was a resolution declaring a phase one emergency, well, not for emergencies, but conservation period and implementing elements of phase one which were previously adopted by the code, or by, as part of the code, those are in the code. This is not an ordinance amending the code. This is an implementation measure. So if there are things in the code such as the current existing watering restrictions between, is it 9 and 5?
Is that correct?
That's correct. That's part of the code now. That, the matter of amending those hours is not before you currently. What's before you now is whether or not to implement phase one, which would include further tightening of those hours. Now, as Sean said, and I agree, we talked about this before the meeting, there's, there is some room, I would say, to change how we implement the phase one. But I would not do wholesale changes to what's already in our code because that could also be a trigger for the state to further scrutinize whether or not we're complying with the order. And there is a $10,000 fine potentially for not complying.
But what we're saying is at that point, it would trigger a code amendment, not?
Well, we are amending our code with this resolution.
No, we're not. I mean, no, we're not.
It does not.
This is in addition to?
You can only amend those ordinance.
This is in addition to the municipal code?
The way, the way the code's structured is it says that if, if the city council finally determines that certain conditions exist, they can declare a phase one water conservation period. At that point, that triggers these additional regulations. The state has said you need to implement your basic conservation plan that does these sorts of things, which includes a lot of what's in the phase one and what's already the city has certainly done before. So this is not an action to amend what was previously adopted in the code. It's an action to make the findings necessary to implement the phase one. And then we've included measures about how that will be implemented. I think within that part-
I think within that part, portion of, of the, uh, resolution, there is grounds for adjusting some of the timing or some of the days, but wholesale revisions will be contrary to the quote, code and its intent and will require for, uh, an ordinance to amend.
I, I haven't heard anything tonight that I think would be a wholesale change.
I don't think so either, but.
I'm just, I'm just.
The municipal code doesn't have anything about days in it at this time, so, I understand what you're saying, though.
Okay, so what do you want to do? What's your pleasure?
Well, I would suggest, based on you seem to have the same idea I do, that we do the three days a week for the, uh, even an odd side, but we set a different time than the, than the six to six. I would like to strike C because I don't think you're going to wash your car every day and you can, the people can wash their car when they want to wash their car, they gotta have, they gotta have the shut off valve, there's no doubt about that. And that's all the state requires right now, under their code. They don't, they don't talk about, you can only do it one day a week or, or certain days of the week.
I think we need to be very clear so people understand, it's not just a shut off valve, that's what I thought we were talking about, but it's actually, what do you call it, a positive shut off, which means it's the kind where you push the trigger and if you release the trigger, the water goes off.
Oh, it just can't be when you turn on and off with your hand?
No, that's what I thought.
Well, I, I have both, I didn't.
Yeah, so, but it's, it's very important that people understand.
So, it has to be handheld?
Just a positive shut off, just so that you, when you release it, that water turns off.
That's cool. Okay, that's fine. Is it going to be written that way? Or is it written that way?
It is. That's a mandatory measure, um, that was already in the.
I'd like to see those two changes. The other thing, I think, just convince me the notice doesn't need to be noticed, they're going to be giving notice for the next 90 days. I'm a little concerned about the enforcement, especially when you have enforcement during the day to make sure nobody's watering, enforcement during the night that you're not overwatering. Both directions. And I don't know, I, I don't know that we need to, I don't know exactly how we're going to address that. I, I just, I, it's unrelated, but I just wanted, is there any significant impact on our, our water budget, or 20% reduction?
Well, I, I can't quite, um, exactly detail how that's going to impact our, our water budget at this time. Um, we haven't, we're, we're not quite sure how much the reduction is actually going to go down. And, and to be clear, this year, the water consumption for the city of Seaweat Beach, this includes residents and the city, is actually up by 3.7% this year. It's not down, we have not reduced as a city. So, um, statewide, it's down 5%.
One of the things you told me today that I, I was, um, I found interesting was that the choice that we have is to mandate everyone restrict their water by 20% or do these measures.
Correct.
So, we don't really know that these measures will cause us to use 20% less water, but that's the goal, right?
Correct.
So, um, I would agree, I'd like to amend the hours to nine to four, if that works for you, which is what our neighboring city, Long Beach, does, which I think.
That's incorrect. Sorry to interrupt, but the code currently requires nine to five. So, I would not recommend so, more permissive than the code currently requires.
That's correct, it is nine to five.
All right, well, I would like to do a code amendment at some point because I think that for every day, whether it's phase one or not phase one, that nine to five's a little restrictive in a beach community where, um, you're not going to do that kind of activity.
So, is the nine to five apply to outdoor irrigation, washing of vehicles and, uh, filling, filling the swimming pools and those sorts of things as well?
Yes. Not the washing of cars. He wants to strike the washing of cars.
Okay.
So, yes, except for the, uh, the washing of cars. If both of you are okay, that we're okay with striking the washing of cars.
That's not part of a phase one requirement, then we're okay with that.
Pardon me?
So, we would like to enforce the phase one?
Okay, so that's a change.
If it's not part of the phase one, then that's okay.
Oh, he's not going, he's just going, he's going to strike C.
You can strike C because it's not part of the municipal code?
It's not one of the.
It's a mandatory measure of phase one, but it's not a mandatory requirement.
Correct.
Okay, so we're going for a flexible implementation of phase one.
Correct.
Okay.
It is part of phase one per the code, but we're only implementing certain measures within phase one.
And there's already one.
Still complying with the state mandates.
And there's already one measure within phase one that we're not recommending enforcement on, so that, there, this would now make it two measures.
And how does that work for us, okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, but, back to your enforcement, how do you intend to do enforcement?
Well, Glenn's a young guy, so, um.
He's got a mustache.
To have him vary his work schedule within the 20 hours that's available, that's one of the nice things about having a consultant perform this service for us.
Does he like to work nights?
Well, he would probably vary his schedule to early mornings or late evenings to try to, um, find a time when people are home and available to, um, to catch people when they're violating the code.
Have you, have you thought, and not that I want this, but have you thought of a hotline also?
That's a great idea, I think we'll, um, we'll put that on our website as far as we have a graffiti line, so we'll have, um, a graffiti and.
No, I do not like neighbors turning in neighbors.
I don't either, really, but.
I think it's really, I, I.
It'll happen.
Without a hotline.
Okay. All right, I don't mind, forget that.
So, there would be no restriction on car washing?
Except for the power, you have to use the nozzle.
That there would be no hours restricted?
Correct.
Is this something that you use like the volunteer police department to monitor? Being out there driving in the streets during the day to see if the, no, it's against the contract? That union contract to the volunteer police department? Oh, well, I mean, water running, you know, if you see water running. I mean, we could, we could supplement it, then, that's what it, that would.
So, part of the service is that our consultant will help us to develop the materials to provide the proper education, um, in conjunction with, um, MODOC. But also, um, our consultant provides a similar set of services for our NPDS program. They go out and do regular inspections of, um, of our homes and, uh, new construction and, um, some of our, our businesses and city facilities. So, they are, have experience and are well-equipped to provide this service for us and have had success with, um, the exact same agency, the, um, State Water Board, in dealing with our NPDS program. So, we feel they're very well-equipped to, um, not only provide a good service, but, uh, keep us in good standing with the state.
Okay, I have one question about enforcement. I lost, I lost it. Um, I don't know, maybe it'll come back in a minute.
While you're looking for it somewhere, I just want to bring this up. And this bothers me that we have laws that are not enforceable or ordinances that are not enforceable. I don't think we should have those. According to the report, 2009, the city of Seaweat Beach adopted a water conservation ordinance, number 1586. Leak repairs on indoor and outdoor plumbing must be completed within seven days of discovery. Now, I'm hearing that we don't have the authority to go in and look for a leak or if it's reported that we have no authority to, to mandate that it be repaired, then we shouldn't have this in the books.
Well, I think, I, I was, I was just talking to Dicky tonight about people that have been calling about higher water bills than normal and she was explaining that not only is there an extra seven days in the billing, they did go through it and then somebody found a leak. They didn't know they had one, but through leading them through it, they found it, they want to correct it, so we just remind them it has to be done in seven days at that point. I don't think we need to go into the premises.
I, I think if you went indoor, you'd have to have a search warrant and you probably wouldn't get a search warrant.
If, if I may address that point, that's precisely correct. If you had a particular property where you knew there was a leak because there's some sort of exterior damage, we know that there's a problem there, it becomes, um, obvious that there's an issue and we need access to the property, um, there's always the option of getting an inspection warrant, uh, and then we can investigate the property and then issue citations to correct the leak. It's not, it's not, when, I think when Sean said, you know, it's a difficult enforcement problem, we can't just walk into somebody's home and say, is something leaking? Um, we would have, need to have reasonable, um, you know, grounds for, for doing so and we would, we would go through the due process, uh, requirements of getting that inspection warrant to, uh, investigate the problem.
I think we have another comment.
If I may, thank you. Uh, you don't have to enter the home to, to detect a leak, you can use the water meter and if, a lot of water meters have a real low flow red diamond on them and if that, if you're sure all the water's turned off in the home and that little diamond is spinning, that's a low flow indication, that's a very good indication that there's a leak. Um, we also have a homeowner survey program where we do go in the home, but it's only with written permission from the homeowner and we evaluate, you know, all of their plumbing fixtures and make recommendations for efficiency and that's something that, that could be available to the city.
Okay, good, thank you very much. All right, so why don't we, um, decide what we want to do here then? Uh, we're going to keep it to nine to five, otherwise we have to amend the, uh, ordinance, right?
Three nights per week, correct?
Uh, three nights a week, three day, uh, um, odd and even. No, you can wash your car whenever as long as you have the positive shut off nozzle. Any other changes, additions?
May, Madam Mayor, um, I would wonder if, good for consistency purposes, um, the council might want to also amend our D and E hours there for filling, uh, refilling swimming pools and spas, spas, and then for water golf courses, parks, grounds, recreational fields are currently stated at 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
I'd like it all to be nine to five, yes.
So, the changes there would be to A, D and E, they would, um, replace the current hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM with 5:00 PM and 9:00 AM.
Yes, thank you. And I just remembered what I wanted to ask about enforcement. The 90 days of education, when does the first, uh, written warning go out? After the 90 days or during the 90 days?
So, I, I would say that the, it would go during the 90 days, the written, the first written, uh, but, uh, if we have, uh, an excessive violation that continuously happens and, and we cannot get compliance, um, I think we're going to do everything we can, multiple visits to try to gain compliance, but, you know.
So, you're saying we're going to start writing in the 90 days? That's what, that was what I was wondering.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so what is the pleasure of the council? I think so, we have to adopt the resolution as presented.
As amended.
As, uh, that's what I mean.
And just to clarify, so there were the changes to hours to A, C, um, A, D and E, um, C would be stricken, um, and no other changes.
Okay, we've got C that's stricken, which is car wash, we have the hours which are changed to nine, uh, to five, no water, and is there anything else? Okay, do I have a motion?
You do.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. All right, that's five zero to accept, uh, as amended on the hours and the car washing. Okay? All right, so now.
Madam Mayor, I know, Madam, I just have two quick questions. One, would the, is the inspector going to get a pass to Leisure World?
Yes.
Okay. Number two.
I'll give it to him.
Does any of this apply to the Navy base and all their orders?
Uh, does it apply to federal property?
The state order does not, but, um, we've already had discussion with Greg Smith over at the Navy to talk to them and they are going to attempt to get, um, come in compliance as much as possible.
You have that restrictor ready for him? Okay, thank you, thank you, Sean. Okay, um, okay, so now, um, I'd like to say that due to lack of business items, in need of city council action, the August 25th, 2014 meeting is hereby.
Mayor, I just recommend that we do a direct mailer on the, on the notification thing, that we do a direct mailer instead of using water bill, but also a direct mailer for PR.
Okay, so, um, uh, staff is so directed?
Yes. Mayor, there is no water bill to the residents in Leisure World.
Right, right, right.
There's only one main water main, one meter for the whole place.
That's, that's why we need the direct mailer.
Well, and also I think Sean's going to go out and meet with each of the communities and hold, uh, kind of informational meetings out there. Okay, so.
How long before we'll have the direct mailer?
Pardon me?